All right, I'd like to call the Union 46 School District meeting to order. Today is Monday, the 15th of December. If we could go around the table real quick, starting on my right with Director Travers.
Bob Travers, Director, Center for Technology Essex.
Erin Knox, Board Member, Essex Junction.
Liz Subin, Board Member, Essex Town.
Al Bombardier, Board Member, Essex Town.
Jack Balendorf on the board from Essex Junction.
I'm from Essex Junction. I'm sorry.
I didn't know it was superintendent.
A little coughing and see what happens.
No more coughing.
It was the dark room. I'm Brian Donahue from Essex Junction School Board Member.
I'm Gary Baker, Scoreboard Member from Essex Town.
Robert, Principal Essex High School.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any visitors to be heard this evening?
Still be presented.
Yes, I know. But no one here for special visit. Thank you, Principal Reardon. So we look forward to the discussions that we'll have later on, but no special visitors. So, okay. Well, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Board Reorganization. As the U-46 Board knows, and as the Superintendent of Chittenden Central knows, this is my last year of my current term of serving as a school board member for Union 46. And in for the past five years, I've had the honor and the privilege of serving as this Board's Chairman. However, this being the last year of my last term, and for having a smooth transition that's going on, I am tendering my resignation as school board chairman to the superintendent. You'll have a letter tomorrow, Ms. DeNova, to that effect. My plan is to continue to serve on the U-46 Board throughout my tenure as assigned. The elections will occur at our, for us in Essex Junction, in Essex Town, in April, and there will be a new board member coming in in April from the Village of Essex Junction to fill this seat. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve this community, to serve this school district, and work with a wonderful group of administrators, with teachers, with students. It's, I, when I stepped in to do this, I never thought I would have the joy that it really has brought me. And yes, it's been sometimes very painful, but it's been very rewarding. And I can't say enough about the wonderful school, our wonderful teachers, our wonderful administrators, that I've had the pleasure to serve while I'm here. So, thank you. You've made it easy for me. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm here for several more months, so I look forward to continuing that relationship. But that relationship will not be as school board chairman anymore. So, Ms. DeNova, effective immediately, I am resigning my position as school board chair, and look for you for some guidance on how we're going to proceed.
Okay. So I'll accept a motion to accept the resignation of board chair of Jack Balendorf at this time. Erin moves, seconded by Brian Donahue with regrets. All those in favor say aye.
Ayes.
Opposed?
Aye.
I want to take a moment to thank you two. It's been a journey, one that I know from many experiences with you. You've made an impact on many students' lives, and administrators as well. And wanted to thank you for your service, because it's not just a monthly meeting. Sometimes it's four meetings a week. And in the month of January, when we're developing budgets, it's four meetings a week, almost every week. So your commitment of time, your professionalism, your support has been appreciated by both students, faculty, and administration, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. DeNova.
So at this time, I'd like to open up nominations for the role of Chair of the U-46 Board.
I'd like to nominate Brian Donahue.
Brian Donahue's been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
Gary Baker seconds the nomination. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor of Brian Donahue as the Chair of the U-46 Board from effective tonight, December 15th through April 15th, I think it's the reorg meeting, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations, Brian.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jack.
He hasn't heard the good news yet.
So at this time, Brian is serving in the capacity of Vice Chair, so I'll leave it to you then to take the gavel and open nominations for someone to replace you as Vice Chair.
And that's what I'd like to do at this time, open nominations for the Vice Chair of the U-46 School Board.
I'd like to nominate Erin Knox.
I would second Erin Knox.
And are there any other further nominations? None heard? Any discussion? That will take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Congratulations, Erin.
Thank you, Brian.
For the full formalities with the Board reorg, I would like to also open the floor for nominations for the position of clerk.
I'd like to renominate Liz Subin to continue her role as clerk for U-46.
Seconded by Erin. Any other further nominations? No discussion? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Congratulations, Liz.
Thank you.
Just in case you thought there was some chance, I wanted to make sure that-
Wait, let me just get that.
That's stupid alien.
Reardon said you didn't resign.
I did.
So we will proceed with the posted agenda, and we are fortunate at this time. I guess just on the reorg, we meet again very soon, in fact, just a few weeks from now for our first budget session. At that time, there'll be a confirmation for committee assignments. There will be, just with the change with Jack from Chair and so forth, there'll be just some few changes in the committee assignments. We'll confirm those at our next meeting.
Okay.
With that business concluded, I'd like to move into our next agenda topic, the STEM Academy progress.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Leanne Smith, who is our STEM Academy leader, and to welcome her to the board presentation tonight, and to hear updates as far as the growth and activities that the STEM Academy's involved in STEM students.
All righty. So.
We're gonna switch.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Have a little bit of the fire.
There should be like music playing.
Change of guard here. I'm honored. This moment is a great occasion. This is a thing.
It's like the Red Sox, everyone gets a theme song.
You get your walkout music.
You gotta tell a player without programs.
So the STEM Academy, like it says here, it's a place for exploring and for making connections. Academy overview, so I assume you guys are probably familiar with our academies, but I thought I'd just have a little slide here. They started in 2009 with our Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, and STEM Academy started in 2013. The first year of the STEM Academy, there were four students, and this year we're up to 53. So there's been a lot of growth, and it's a significant program with, you know, a lot of things that I'm working pretty hard on to make go. Students typically register for the academies at the end of their freshman year, and I'm working pretty closely with the AVPA leaders, so we're having our assemblies to advertise to freshmen at the same time, and we're trying to keep the academies pretty well aligned with their goals and the things you need to do in each academy. And the academy's been going on for a few years, but now the state of Vermont is going to these personalized learning plans for all students. So academies are one possible manifestation of a personalized learning plan. It works well for students who have a specific interest, if you're interested in science or if you're interested in art. This might be something that could morph into a personalized learning plan, but not necessarily. I'm not necessarily saying that with the authority of the person who's doing that, but it seems to me there's some overlap there. So what does the STEM endorsement mean? You'll get a stamp on your diploma, and in order to get that stamp, you need to enroll in the advisory. I assume you all know what our advisory is. Once a week, we have a 30-minute sort of homeroom kind of thing at mixed age where you get together with one person for the whole four years of your high school career. If you're interested in STEM, you're enrolled in a STEM advisory. One year in the STEM advisory, the first thing we did this fall was we started an electronic portfolio, so the students outlined what their goals were, and as they go throughout their time in the academy, they'll put the experiences they've had in the portfolio, and then reflect on their goals and refine that process throughout the time. They need to attend 10 STEM lecture series events, so we've been having those on the order of once a month, maybe. We've had people come in from UVM, from VTC, from Allscripts, a software development company. The Hour of Code is gonna be this month's lecture series event. We're gonna hang out in here and try some coding. We have somebody coming in in January to talk about getting energy from farm waste. So a lot of people want to come in and talk. Honestly, in January, February, March, I almost have more people to talk when I have time, so the community's standing in there. The STEM internship class, I tried to make this academy so that there were not a lot of actual courses to sign up for, because I know the school, then a school thing's tricky, because a lot of the students who would sign up for the academy are busy. So advisory was just great for making this thing get off the ground, because it gave it uniform time when we all have to be together. The only actual class you need to sign up for is a one semester internship class, which ideally the student takes in their junior year. In the sophomore year, you're hanging out in advisory, kind of starting to get some ideas. You do the internship in the community in your junior year, and you do a capstone project in your senior year. And you need to access the curriculum in the means of four years of math and four years of science. And the goals of the academy, one of the main goals has always been personalized growth. That's why I think it lines up with the personal learning plans. If a student goes through the academy and at the end of the time decides that they don't want to be a scientist, I don't consider that a failure. You've looked in your heart, you've looked at an opportunity, you've grown, and you've gone somewhere. So ways that you would have this growth, like I said, the advisory, you're grouped with people like you, so that would help you to grow. The ePortfolio, clearly, and the internship class and the capstone project, all those things allow you to move along your path. Making connections is a huge thing. You're in an advisory with other people your own age who share common interests, and it's just so much about bouncing ideas off of people. Your advisor shares your interests, and you meet people in the community during your internship, people coming for the lecture series, so it's about making the connections. Creativity and collaboration is, of course, at the heart of the thing. Digital literacy, the students doing their portfolios, that's a Google site. When you take the internship class, I want the students to learn how to use Twitter and blogging and LinkedIn profiles, so use the Internet in a little bit more professional way, not so much a Facebook, Instagram kind of way. Awareness to societal and global issues, you'll see, that's kind of at the heart of a lot of our projects. And enhance the quality of the college application. I think part of why we got 53 students is at the assembly last spring, a guidance counselor stood up and said how important it was to colleges, that you're not just taking a whole bunch of AP classes, that you have something that makes you stand out from the average student, and all these experiences, I think, would allow a student to put together a pretty good college application. So the academy's divided into four strands. You fill out your registration form, you indicate the things you're interested in, and I looked at all of them, and these were the ones that kind of stood out. So medicine, life sciences, computer sciences and math, and engineering, and what's going on in those advisories. So in the medical advisory, I heard about this project over the summer. We're building prosthetic hands using a 3D printer, so there's this outfit, enablingthefuture.org, where engineers have put 3D printer files online, and you just download the files, and if you have a 3D printer, there's a matching service that connects people with 3D printers with people who need hands. And they matched us up with three people. I have enough students, there's 19 students now, it's been growing. I have four groups, we're making three hands, one person needs two. So we printed out all the parts. We're making this raptor hand.
That's so cool.
And I did not bring in my bag back here, which I should have brought with me.
I have a hand.
Yes, thank you. So. So here's a hand. It's, the, so the parts were all made on the 3D printer, and there's elastic cabling, and there's also these tensioner cables. So the way, it's not done yet, these cables have to get attached here in the tensioner, but the way that's gonna work, once it's attached, is the, you know, when you have this gauntlet, it's on your wrist, so if you bend your wrist, the finger's gonna move. And this is like 80-pound test fishing line, so hopefully it's a sturdy thing. I mean, this raptor hand has been pretty well received by the community, so we need to get these things finished. It's been a while. We had Thanksgiving, we had testing for the English thing, we've had a snow day, so I'm hoping to get people after school, because we gotta get these things finished, and people want them. So, that's the medical advisory. It is team taught by myself and by a tech ed teacher, so we do that down in the tech ed room. Like I said, four hands, three recipients. We use the RhinoCAD software to help a little bit with the build plates, to make sure they were being printed properly. And we have a lovely 3D printer down in the fab lab. It's a $15,000 thing we got with a grant. It's very nice. You just hit print and walk away. It's a very nice printer. So here's just a schematic of all the parts. And when the things come off the printer build plate, this is the gauntlet, that thing I showed you that goes on your wrist, and fingers. And here's some people constructing them. There's a lot of women in the academy. I'm not 100% sure why that is. I mean, I'm female, I got up, I did the pitch, and maybe that's part of it. In my personal opinion, I think women like to do tech problems that are more, that have a little bit more of a heart, that are more about solving a problem in the community, that are more about helping people, less about just straight-up building bridges. And I, so in all of my pitches about the academy, I talk like that, and maybe that's part of why I have more women, but I'm honestly not sure. So here's a lot of young ladies in the medical advisory working on their hands. Lots of hands. In the life sciences advisory, and we have, you know, 75% of the STEM advisories represented here this evening, so. In the life sciences advisory, the first thing they did was they did an inquiry activity where they were looking for E. coli in water, so they went to a pond and got a sample of icky water, and they got some water from their houses and went to see just how much bacteria there actually was. So this is the icky water, which had dots, and the nice house water did not have E. coli, so that was the first thing. And it demonstrated the importance of using controls and why water quality testing is important. The next thing they did was some research on GMOs. We have the hardware in-house to determine whether or not some food products had materials in them that had GMOs in them, so that's, is that done? Snow day. Snow day, right. Snow days, snow day was tough for, snow day was tough for everyone. And the next thing we're all working on, Kelly Hill in the back there wrote just a lovely proposal for how to have a, have the students build a bat cave. A problem in the community is the white-nose fungus, so we're gonna build a little house and see if we can induce the bats to hibernate in it and to learn about their behavior, and hopefully raise awareness in the community about the white-nose fungus, and teach the students about it. And the Samsung Sulfur Tomorrow contest, you can get lots of nice hardware. We were named one of the top five in the state, and just recently, we were named the state winner, which means we get at least $20,000 worth of Samsung hardware. I just received a laptop and a nice video camera, so the next thing is to make a movie of the students making the bat house, and that movie will be judged at the national level, and depending on how it goes, we can get even more hardware and trips, and it's all good, but I mean, it's great. And this bat cave thing is just gonna be great fun for everyone. So yay for that. In the engineering advisory, the first thing they did was introduce the design process by building paper rockets, so here's an air cannon. Put the paper rockets there, and they launch, and they did that for a while. Mr. Jason, do you want to add anything about the air cannons? So, yeah. And right now, they're working on Rhino, the software I mentioned earlier, to design 3D printed parts to go on the printer. In computer science? They've been working with Arduinos. Arduinos are little microcontrollers. You can program them, and you can make them do things. You have sensors or whatever that give an input, and then it gives an output, and you can use it to create all sorts of things. It's a wildly creative thing, it's very popular. And there's some students in the school that are very good at that. They're in a robotics club, and two of those students are in this advisory, so those students are actually the ones leading a lot of the projects in that advisory, so that's a good thing. And the, those students in the advisory, and they're also in the robotics club, will be helping out with the bat cave probably, because it'd be nice to have sensors to know when the bats are going in and out, and that's the kind of thing that Arduinos or a similar product, a Beaglebone or something, might be good for, so we can have those two advisories working together on that. So here's some students working with Arduinos. Arduinos. So 30 minutes a week isn't really that much time. I was sort of thinking I would be scrambling for stuff to do in advisory, but I think all of us are in the place where we're still sort of working on our projects from the fall. But as we wrap those up, I would like to go back and visit the students' goals and their portfolio again. What have you learned in your first project? How's your portfolio going along? And then the next thing I'd like all the advisories to do is to pick a problem in the community and design and build a solution. But those things, it's already kind of starting to happen. I mean, the bat cave is a problem in the community, and then if the computer science group is helping to work with the sensors, so, you know, we're moving in the direction of trying to solve problems in the community using STEM. Contest, this year, I don't think we're gonna do that much with this, but I'd like to work towards the students working on contests. There's just a million things around here. There's the task contest, the Google things, the Vermont State Science, there's a whole pile of things that I think the advisories could be working towards, but I think this year, we'll just sort of start talking about it, and then next year, when students are starting to work on our capstone projects, we'll get into that in a little more, a little more detail. So what I'm all about right now is community outreach. This whole thing relies on the community wanting to work with us for the internships and the capstone projects, and so I'm just all about that. I've been to Tech Jam, I went last year, I went this year, I go around with my business cards, I tell my story to anybody who'll listen. I've spoken a lot recently. I've been to VCTM in November, I went to Vermont Fest in Killington in November, I talked to Essex Rotary. VSTEM, it's a coalition of people at UVM, and the Agency of Education, and STEM Education statewide. They meet once a month or so. I spoke to them last week. We're going to a lot of maker events. Maker, the phenomenon in the community where this, it's a worldwide thing, but it's big here, where you're creative, artistic, using technology for found purposes. It's a big thing in this community. So I've been going to a lot of those things recently, trying to figure out how to plug in, and you'll hear more about that later from Martine, who's put a maker space over here in the library, and we're thinking maybe some of this space could be repurposed for a maker phenomenon, kind of thing. I've joined Girl Development, I think learning to code would be cool, so that's a local meetup thing where women get together and code. I'd like to know more about that. The Hour of Code, we're gonna have here, like I said. I tweet regularly, and people are following me, and then people retweet what I'm saying. I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get myself in that world, and I think I've had, I've had some success with that.
Have you thought about Vermont Business Roundtable? I don't know if they allow presentation, I'm forgetting about, I can't remember their meeting format, but Vermont Business Roundtable would be huge, because that's where, like, I mean, Global Foundries will be sitting at that table.
Thank you. Vermont Technology Alliance is next on my radar. I'm working that one, so yes, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And this is just a thing I do. I have this mind map, so I talk to people in the community all the time, and I arrange them in this web, and they have little symbols that mean stuff to me, so I'm just really trying very hard. Everybody I talk to, I put them in my map, and I'm, because it's all about, it's about making those connections. We have an advisory board, we meet twice a year, so on the advisory board, we have UVM, Fletcher Allen, Champlin College, you can read those, and these people have been helpful in helping me to reach out to the community, and I want to have them help put kind of a stamp of this is what the community wants on the academy. You know, at the assembly we're gonna have for freshmen this January, or February, I'd like to have some of these people, maybe at least write a letter, or I think maybe one or two of them might speak, and these are, these are things I'm trying for, to bring at home to students that higher ed and the community wants people who have these kind of experiences, to make the academy a more viable thing. So the STEM internship class, pulling the whole community together, making this thing happen. And at the first semester, there's a tech intro, I'm kind of getting them with a LinkedIn profile and the Twitter and the blogging, and try to get them connected like that. Then we do some career exploration, so I'm working closely with Pam Hemingway. We have a new career coordinator in-house. It's not just STEM internships, there's also community internships and AVPA internships, and one person's coordinating all those. So she's helping me put together a very nice, you know, cover letter, resume, job skills kind of curriculum. I had one, but I think with her, it's gonna be better. Then you go out to the job site, when you come back, you research what you did, you make connections around things, and then you present to the community. And also, I've been working really hard every time I'm on the phone, would you take a student for 40 hours? And so Logic Supply, IBM, four people at UVM, Hematologic Labs, and Echo have all committed to taking students. Stuff that I'm working right now is RETN, Husky, GD, and I have a friend in the community who's good at programming, who's talking, he's opening doors for me, so this is where we are with the internship class right now. The capstone projects, so the original plan with the capstone projects, right now, the academy is maybe, you know, 35 sophomores and 15 juniors kind of thing, so there's gonna be students who need to start on the capstone projects this spring, and I would, in order to have there not be a lot of classes, the original plan was that the capstone projects would be done in conjunction with the advisors during the advisory time. But as I see how little time there really is in advisory, I'm kind of starting to get a little nervous about that. So what I'm thinking, and this is just me thinking, that might need to be a separate class. I didn't want to do that upfront to get the students nervous that they'd have to do a whole lot of classes, but, you know, this first bunch, we'll start with doing it in advisory, but if it doesn't work, I could see, AVPA has a separate capstone project class, and we might want to go in that direction, and that would be something that would take a little bit more resources. Just wanted to show you quickly the ePortfolio. I'm not sure how much of this you can read, but this is a Google site, so there's separate tabs. So we've started off with filling out our goals, where do you see yourself, how can the STEM Academy help you? If you could change anything in the world, what would it be? And as they do projects in advisory, as they do their capstone project, the internship, as they make contacts, as they go to the STEM lecture series, all these things are gonna edit their Google site to put in there. So future plans. Grow community partnerships. I'm a little bit of a broken record there, but I'm a little worried about it. If we're really successful here, I'm gonna have to get a lot of high-tech companies willing to take students for 40 hours, which is non-trivial, so I'm working that at a lot of levels, and that's, that's a thing. UVM's very willing to work with us, as they're breaking, we're about to break ground on that new STEM development over there. They've really been, I think, probably reaching out maybe a little bit harder. So they've discussed the possibility of a pathway, students in the STEM Academy could possibly have a little bit of an easier time getting into UVM. There's an Itest grant, I don't know what that stands for, but it's a grant that UVM would reach out to work with K-12 establishments in the area, and we're working with them to help them possibly get that grant. And we've discussed with them the possibility of a community day, there's people over there willing to work with me, wouldn't it be cool to have just a big party at UVM one day, all about STEM? The community's there, and the students are there, and it just sounds like a cool thing. New courses, we have in the program of studies for next year, Designing Solutions to Global Challenges, taught by Jorge's back there, and we're also putting in Introduction to Computer App Development. Like to increase the collaboration with CTE. I've kind of seen this program so far as like CTE for high school students, I mean, the work model that you get to learn stuff and then apply it. This is sort of a learn stuff in the classroom and then apply it in a high school kind of way. I'm kind of taking that model and trying to put it together for high school students, but we do need to increase, as the program grows, I mean, I think it just naturally makes sense that we share resources and things kind of come together there. Middle school outreach, a lot of kids are making decisions about what they're gonna do when they're 12 or 13, you know, I think we really do need to reach out. I mean, it's not like you're stuck there. I changed my career three times as an adult, but I mean, I, you know, they're making decisions about what classes they're gonna take, and I think it would be important to reach out more there. Like I said, there's a large emphasis on making in the community, and then work on that. And the capstone projects, you know, there's gonna be, if I end up with 100 kids in the academy, there's gonna be resources, there's gonna be time, there's gonna be space, that's a thing, so I need to, success is gonna mean resources. And just quickly, to, I'm kind of, I'm leading into Martine now, so one resource that we have is the Fab Lab. I think a lot of you have probably seen it. There's a lovely 3D printer down there, we have a laser engraver, a CNC lathe, an electronics workstation, robotic club workspace, and we recently got a CNC Milli machine. So just some pictures of it, as you've probably seen it, but there's all the tables we're building the hands in, all by the computers. So this is the actual fab part. So there's the laser engraver, there's the 3D printer, electronics workstation, the bath that we do the hands-in robotics stuff here. It's an elephant thing, so robotics kids hang out there. And those are those resources. Now, along with that, we also have a newly developed Makerspace over here, and I'm hoping that that Makerspace grows, and I'm hoping the collaboration between the STEM Academy and the Makerspace grows. And with that, I'm done, and Martine will speak next, but did you guys have questions for me first, or?
I had a real quick question.
Yes.
Then you said the number of females, is it high compared to like a national average? You were saying that you feel like you have a lot of women that are-
I do. I've never actually run the numbers compared to a national average or anything.
But like, you're seeing a lot.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did the, did the hand, did you kind of choose the hand project after you already had the kids? Because I'm just wondering, you were saying that, you know, women are kind of drawn to-
Yeah.
-projects that are kind of like helping or-
Right.
And obviously doing those hands.
Right. Well, I think that's just an example of me, a woman, being drawn to that project that was helping. So I saw, I mean, I saw it at the course of the summer, and I practically cried. I mean, it was like, oh my god.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's that kind of thing.
And it's pretty amazing that our students can help people.
Do that.
Yeah. It's really amazing.
But you can turn it into a product, too. It doesn't have to be in the real world.
Right. And it's a thing that combines, I mean, it's the internet, helping people worldwide in a technological cooperative kind of way. That's exactly the kind of stuff I'd like the academy to do. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, and I will take my hand.
Thank you. That's fantastic.
That's good.
Give yourself a hand.
All right.
Let me, let me just add, before Leanne leaves, I, in my daytime job, I was, I took advantage of having a STEM student come to my company and serve as, in an internship here, making aviation fuel gauging systems for helicopters and fixed-wing aircraft. And it was a very rewarding experience, not just for having the student there, but to have my employees work with today's, you know, high-tech students or people who are interested in those techno, in those kinds of technologies, to be able to use the, the design tools, be out on the, on our production line, understand what we need to be successful in the future, I think was a very fruitful opportunity for, for both us as a company as well as the, the student who, who came out to work with us on an internship. So fully supportive of that.
Thank you. And we appreciate the time that you guys put in as well.
Excellent. Okay. Nice segue.
Welcome, Martine.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. I really consider you a very high-functioning board and look to you as a model of just great governance. And thank you, Rob, for letting me come tonight and for being so supportive. I just wanted to segue from what Leanne was talking about to say that the library hopes to support Leanne in her endeavors, not only with the Makerspace, but also just in terms of curating all the resources that she has. We're really starting to beef up our webpage, and we hope to be able to help her organize and curate all of those amazing things that are out there. The library, I'm going to point out some of the changes that we've made. I'm going to take you on a little journey. But we are really trying to move forward to kind of a learning commons model, where we don't just house books. It's not just a book museum, but it really is a place for the whole community, the whole school, to come and engage and create and innovate and learn and present and do all kinds of fun things. So there's definitely a transition happening, and I will be talking a little bit about that. I wanted to start with just a few stats for you. So far, in the last year and a quarter plus, we've weeded about nine thousand eight hundred and thirty items, books from our collection. We still have an enormous collection of twenty-six thousand books and DVDs and other resources, very, very large collection. It's hard to weed books. People find it difficult. At the same time, it's something that needs to be done. What we do with books that we weed is we offer them to staff, to faculty, to anyone in our school community. If they're really old and in poor shape, we can occasionally throw them away. And then the books that are left over, we are helping some other libraries out and also donating to a nonprofit called Better World Books that does great things with leftover books as well. The average age of our collection went from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand last year, and the average age now of our collection is about two thousand and two. We hope to continue to make that a little bit more modern. We have an average of fifteen hundred and forty-four visits per day in the library, and yearly average is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand fifty-five, plus or minus. So this library is well-used and well-loved by many people in the school. I did want to just put in here, I hope to create, we hope to create a collection that is up-to-date, relevant, and tied to curriculum. Data shows that when libraries are thoroughly weeded, circulation actually goes up, doesn't go down. Students see books that are relevant, that are new, that are exciting, and they tend to take things out more often. One of the books that I weeded, I should have brought it to you, but it's basically this old Batgammon book from nineteen seventy-two, and had nothing to do with anything that we teach at the school. Not that there's anything wrong with Batgammon, but it was just very dated and isn't tied to our curriculum. And you can use the internet to learn about Batgammon, or you could go to the public library to get a book on Batgammon. The computer lab last year had seven hundred and seventy-three visits. That was class visits. We had to turn away ninety-seven just because it was so busy. I wanted to just briefly show you some of the things we've done with our webpage. We've definitely made it more up-to-date, and more and more students are using it, using our databases, using our pathfinders to get what they need, using the catalog from any place on the globe. You can get to all of these things. And we also have some great social media that we've created here. We have a wonderful Facebook page that has everything from photographs to articles to what's happening in the community. If you haven't liked it yet, please do. Whoops, sorry about that. We have a Pinterest page where we tend to place our new books that have come in so that students can see exactly what we've got for them, if they're interested in taking out a book. We have an Instagram account, because kids are on Instagram, where we just update with photographs and events that we're posting in the library. And lastly, we just, last week, started a blog. And the blog is focusing on the Makerspace. And just today, we started having a couple students approach us and ask if they can blog about some of the things that they're doing. So that's been really exciting. Just that kind of social media has been really exciting, and the kids enjoy it. So anyway, those are a few of the things that we're doing. Please stop me if you have questions, or if you would just like to say something.
Well, I would just like to say, thank you to the library, because how many books were donated to the community?
Oh, yeah, we did donate some.
The senior citizens had a community dinner that the Rotary and Lions Club hosted. And at those meetings, at the annual event, they always provide gift bags. And in the past, we had a librarian that was part of Rotary, and so they said, what are we going to do for books? And it was like five days before the event, and I emailed Martine, and she said, I can help you out with books. And it was great, because the American Heritage Collection, it was a perfect collection for that group of folks.
We got some.
And they were so appreciative. And not only did she donate, she delivered. So on behalf of the senior citizens and Rotary Club, I would say that a special thanks with gratitude for the generosity, because it helped both this library to weed and be more current, and also provide a special gift for the seniors in our community. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Glad it worked out. Thanks. Yeah, thank you. So you've probably seen that we've taken out a few shelves. One of the reasons this, we wanted this shelf to go out, just it makes the AV room and the AV department and the studio back there that much more accessible. It just opens up this whole area. It used to get cramped. Kids would have to stand there, and they would block the flow. This has just been wonderful. We also took out a nonfiction shelf that gives us more space over there. We, we used to have issues with some tables by the windows, because nobody could see what was going on in that space. So we moved this desk here, and then we bought three tables that are actually higher, cafe tables, so we can see what goes on over there. And that's solved all the problems. So that's been great. We got a generous grant last year, and we created this reading nook. We call it the Wi-Fi Cold Spot. It is just such a great space. I walked by there today. I think there are about twelve people there. Teachers correcting papers, students quietly reading. Just a really great atmosphere, not to mention this is beautiful. We had an art opening there, what, about a month ago, Bob, just in that picture? Home Pranen, who's a student who lived in a refugee camp in Nepal. He's a Bhutanese student, and he's a CTE student. He's also an incredible artist. We had an art opening for him. We had people come from all over the community, the director of Camp Abnaki, people from Wenuski High School. And it was just a lovely event, and Home was very thankful that we were able to showcase his work. So that's the kind of thing that we can do in this space now, which is great.
That's great.
One morning last year, we, it came to us that in the mornings and after school, we have hundreds and hundreds of kids standing in this library, not necessarily doing much. And we thought, wouldn't this be a great time for a performance, or for, for some students to showcase some work of some kind? You have this captive audience. So we started these morning coffee houses, and students come and they play the guitar, they sing, they read poetry in various languages. A couple weeks ago, we had the jazz orchestra come in on a Friday morning. It was, it was great. And like I said, you've got this captive audience of several hundred students. So that's also been a great, fun event that we've, we've had. But one of our biggest changes, as Liz has already heard, is the Makerspace. This photo doesn't even do it justice, really. There were shelves running all the way up and down this room that were pretty much loaded with old magazines, old newspapers. It was dusty. Nobody really went in there. And last year, I kept asking, you know, what can we do with this space? There's got to be something more creative, more interesting we can do. I happened to have a great assistant at the time, who was getting her master's in library science, and she said, how about a Makerspace? And she proceeded to create, you know, this, a book, basically, about how to make a Makerspace and all the, the various stages and what you need to do. And so we really embraced it. We realized that everything we had in there was archived online, so we didn't technically need to have a hard copy of it. And we started cleaning out. And it was a process. We worked over the summer. We worked into the fall. But it was just incredibly rewarding. We created a buzz by putting all these signs on the windows in the fall, and students kept asking, what's going on in there? What's happening? And then-
Some thought it was a crime scene.
They thought it was a crime scene, which was very intriguing to them. And then eventually, we had the grand opening on September seventeenth. We had hundreds of CTE students that day, hundreds of high school students and teachers come down. And it was just really fun to kind of sit back and watch the interactions between students. The Makerspace is a great place for people to come together, CTE students and high school students, students with some severe learning disabilities and AP students work together in the Makerspace. So it's just this great communal atmosphere. And on any given day, you walk in there, and there's some student teaching another student how to knit, or how to make buttons, or how to print something on the vinyl cutter. It's just, it's just a great, great, great place, and always makes me really thankful that we've had the opportunity to do this.
It's great for climate and culture.
We've had some really great donations. Joe Chase was really wonderful in donating a, a vinyl cutter for, to us, and that's been extremely popular. Students were making a lot of vinyls using images they had gotten off the internet. Last week, we decided, or a few weeks ago, to do a contest for original designs. We had some great submissions, students doing some wonderful original work, and we gave a prize out. We also got a wonderful grant from Heart and Soul of Essex, and some more money from Joe Chase are going to buy a 3D printer. Or we have bought a 3D printer. It's on its way, actually. So we're very excited about that. It's not the fifteen thousand dollar version. It's something more modest, but possibly also just more accessible and maybe even something that can move at some point around the school. So not just stuck here, it's something that we can take around. Yep. We've had over two thousand visits since the opening, which has been great. It would be wonderful in my dream world, we would have a low-tech Makerspace and a high-tech Makerspace. I'm not sure if that's something that's possible, but I did approach Leanne at one point and say, boy, wouldn't it be great if we could really support the STEM Academy and everything they do? So, I don't know, something to think about or dream about. Right now, we've got some high-tech and some low-tech stuff in there, and it's, it's working out fine for now. We'll see what the future holds. Um, oh, I'm missing a quote. I think I'm missing a quote. Well, this is a quote about the maker movement from Gary Stager. He is kind of a maker guru. He speaks at a lot of conferences. He goes all over the country talking about making and maker movements. It basically says that "The shift to making represents the perfect storm of new technological materials, expanded opportunities, learning through firsthand experience, and the basic human impulse to create." It offers a potential to make classrooms, so Makerspace is sure, but classrooms also more child-centered, relevant, and more sensitive to each child's remarkable capacity for intensity. "Making is predicated on the desire that we all have to exert, that we all have to exert agency over our lives to solve our own problems. It recognizes that knowledge is a consequence of experience, and it seeks to democratize, democratize access to a vast range of experience and expertise so that each child can engage in authentic problem-solving." And that was one of the things that I wanted to talk about with the Makerspace. It really is student-centered, and it really is student-driven. And kids come in there, and they've got ideas on what they want to do that are very original and very unique, and we're really trying to cultivate that. So that is a, that's one of the great things of the space. What does the future hold? Well, we're already collaborating a little bit with STEM and hope to do so more in the future. This is something that we hope will be happening in the library. We hope that we will be able to house the Career Center now that we have a career coordinator. Again, in terms of having this learning commons, it seems to make sense to have communal spaces in here. And the Career Center is certainly something that's communal, that is there for everyone in the school. And it seems like a great place, or a great thing to have here in the library as opposed to a static classroom. We would like to be able to help with capstone projects in the Makerspace, eventually have some student-led seminars. We've had some students come into the Makerspace and say, I'd like to do a workshop on Arduino's at some point. Great. Making those connections. If the Career Center were to go in the library, I could see that the Makerspace would be a nice spot for community presenters to talk about what it is that they do, and maybe even give some workshops or some lessons to students. I envision a badge system where students reach different levels of proficiency, and when they do so, they get a badge and eventually become a mentor. So they are teaching each other. I also see it as a place to demonstrate proficiency, as I said. Maybe someday, school credit? Maybe these mentors can get a quarter credit, as opposed to sitting in a study hall, come down in the Makerspace and do some work. It's also just a wonderful place for project-based learning. So I've got that on there as well. Any questions? This is something that Dave Dahl put together. I asked him if he could do a couple of layouts of the library. Not major changes, just a few small things, but with the thought of possibly having the Career Center in here, we thought it would be nice to put windows around that room, just to make it more visible. There seems to be a, a need. I get a lot of requests every day for a charging station. So many people have devices that they're working around- So many people have devices that they're working around with, walking around with. They would love to have a place to be able to charge. And also kind of an information station where you've got the daily announcements going on, you've got the calendars, you've got our website and our library catalog, our databases, all right there, available. And then he showed how ultimately it'd be nice to just continue to open the library up. You may have noticed, we took some of the tall shelves down over there. Adds a lot of light to that space. So that was just one image and that was another kind of similar. So, yeah, I also eventually would like to think about rewriting the jobs of the library assistants. I think many of those jobs have morphed from cataloging books and doing that type of thing to working on our website, web design, doing some coding in the Makerspace, certainly working with social media. So my hope by the end of the school year is to have new job descriptions for our assistants as well. And I believe that it is it, although I'm kind of sad that I seem to have lost-
It's in there.
Is it?
Yeah.
I went right by that one. I do like this quote, guys, and then I will leave you on this quote. This is Tony Marks, he's the president of the New York Public Libraries. And he said, "I don't think the library's threatened. Circulation of physical books has never been higher. But I wouldn't even agree that libraries are in the book business. I think they're in the information sharing business. And it just so happens that books have been the primary method of sharing information for half a millennium." The library isn't going to compete with the internet, it's going to be part of the internet. So that just kind of embodies part of what we're doing here. But again, thank you for your support. If you have ideas, send them to me, we're open. And I guess you guys are up next, if no one has any questions?
Thank you, Markin.
I'd just like to point out that some of the newer staff that you brought on this year are really rolling up their sleeves and enthusiastic about the Makerspace.
They really are.
And other initiatives that you've implemented.
They're embracing it and running with it, for sure.
And it is open tonight.
Yeah, yeah, you can definitely go over there and look. It's fun during the school day when it's full of students. You're definitely welcome to take a look if you'd like.
Thank you.
Is that yours? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
So Kelly Hill is back.
With Joe.
And Joe.
I made Joe come over this year. Well, thank you for asking us to come to speak with you. We always love to talk about what we do. And I did ask Joe to come, at least to talk in the beginning, about the KNECAP results because he's our data guy and nobody can put the data in perspective like he can. So he's going to actually do the first couple of slides. And because KNECAP is certainly something we are still doing, but we also, I'll talk to you about Next Gen as well because that's in our future. So he'll start with the KNECAP results.
Okay, great, thank you. So I think one of the things I wanted to share with you tonight was a study that we did, tried to look at scores of students outside the general categories that are presented. So as you're aware, the categories are broken up into four. And the graphs that you're taking a look at right now are the number of students who are proficient or proficient with distinction and what those numbers look like over time. But there's an inherent problem with taking a look at these, grouping these scores by broad categories. And I'll show you what that looks like in a second. But just so that you're able to take a look at what the results have looked like over the last six years. And the red line is where Essex is performing and then the orange line is where the state average is. So it looks like there's quite a bit of fluctuation here. This is pretty flat and then a drop by six points and then an increase by eight points and then followed by what looks like a drop by 11 percentage points. So that's what the data looks like when you're looking at those broad categories. But in the next slide, sort of highlights and provides some data. I know it's really complicated, but I'll talk about what it means exactly. Last month, Secretary Holcomb released a memo that talked about the dangers of looking at, at results that are grouped by categories. And a couple of points that she highlighted were that, number one, the cut scores can be relatively subjective. That means that the scores that's assigned to be proficient with distinction or proficient or, or below that are decided by a panel. And, and there can be a degree of subjectivity. So just to give you an example, this is pretty complicated, but down at the bottom axis is what the scaled scores are. And then this is the number of students that received that particular scaled score. And the dotted lines that are here are the cut scores that are assigned to the scaled score. So this is, I'm not sure if you can see this really accurately, but right here, and blue is 2014, black is the year before. Right here, 24 students who missed the cut score for being proficient by, by one point. So if you think about that, and of course, as a science teacher, I'm talking to my students all the time about margin of error. And so if you think about that one point and how that would translate to this graphic, well, if those, if that's cut, cut score was different by one point, then we're not talking about down by nine points. I think we're talking about up by three, something like that. So it turns out that, I guess Secretary Holcomb was reading my mind, but it turns out that that is one of the big issues. And then the second issue is about the inability to track growth over time, which is the number one thing that we're looking at for our students is about how they grow. And you might say, well, okay, Joe, why don't you go take a look at what their growth and scores have been from eighth grade to 11th grade, except that most of our students come from a different school district and we don't have access to their eighth grade? So we're really excited to think about the potential for admin inform. And so I've been given a one-block release this year to take a look at a number of different metrics and also to take a look at how admin inform can help us in the future. Although, as Kelly is going to talk about, we're right now in the throes of, you know, focusing on alignment with Next Gen before we move to the assessment part. But I think that's really, that's the great potential is for us to really take a look at student growth over time. And so anyway, we look forward to that work.
But that score decrease occurred in both middle schools, too.
Right.
And so the question I had was, is this due to a change in the test? Or there's more subjective judgment or are we missing something?
Well, that's a great point. And Kelly's going to have a more thorough analysis of, she's going to give you an example about some sample questions and, and also to take a look at the importance of reading in those tests.
Okay. So it's, it's, the test is a moving target, too?
It, yes, it's very much a moving target. But we're really excited about the alignment of the Next Gen and the potential for our local assessments. And, you know, you've heard that message from us before, but-
Yep.
We, we had this little thing called Next Gen come along that we had to dance around. So, all right, anything else? Okay, terrific, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So we will talk a little bit about what we think Next Gen might look like in terms of assessment. I had a meeting on Friday, got a little bit more of an update about that. So you brought up targets, so it's kind of our next slide, which fits nicely. So one thing that KNECAP does is they do have assessment targets. It tells us very specifically what the students are expected to be able to, you know, write about and, you know, answer questions about. So one thing we did was as a content area, we looked at the targets and we looked to see and make sure, do our students have an opportunity to do this? And do we have them covered in our typical core core sequence? But one thing to note is that, you know, we do have a high percentage that take the four core courses. So most of our students, 84%, and that's an average for the past three years, are taking Earth Science, Biochem, and Physics. But one of the hard things is that only 30% of them are taking them before the end of 11th grade, which is when the test is given. So the physics piece, when you see the physical science, it's actually physics and chem. So that physics piece is always a little tricky for us because most of our students are taking it after the test. So they do release some questions for us to look at. So we did spend some time looking at them. We want to make sure that, again, that we're aligned. And when we look at specific questions, that our students do have a chance to have that kind of question asked of them throughout our sequence, not just on the KNECAP test. Another note that I wanted just to show you is how there's been a trend in the past couple of years for students to actually double earlier. And it's not something that we're particularly promoting because especially in ninth grade, you can see they've gone from 20% a couple of years ago, that's doubled, the number of doublers have doubled in ninth grade. And that's something that the students decide in eighth grade with their guidance counselors and science teachers. So there's just been a trend for that. And then we also see an increase in the 10th grade. And then it's actually gone down a little bit in 11th grade, which makes sense because if they're doubling earlier, but then still a lot in 12th grade. And the 12th grade is high because we have a lot of electives that open up to students and not just AP, but we have all levels of electives. So we're very fortunate, we have students taking a lot of science classes. And I think for some of them, the decision whether to double in ninth or 10th grade relates to what other courses they're taking. So it's up to them to decide kind of their four-year plan. So they do give us some information about the different topics and how our students do. So this actually was last year's data, 2013. And then if we compare it to 2014, so they do break it out by physical science, Earth and Space Science, Life Science, and Inquiry. And it's pretty much equal for the three, you know, main subject areas. And, you know, we, we're pretty consistent from last year, two years ago, to last spring. And the only thing that I could see that was a little different was Life Science seemed to go down a little bit. And I think the reason we're consistent, we haven't changed our curriculum. Students are still taking science classes, so we didn't expect these to change. We haven't really done anything different within those classes. So that's to be expected. They give us a few questions to look at and we looked at them. We couldn't see why Life Science would have gone down. I think that the questions are pretty consistent from year to year. So we weren't sure what that's about. Based on, they don't give us a lot to look at, but based on what they gave us, we couldn't see anything that popped up. So I just want to give you an idea of what they give you on the test so you know what the students are, what they see and what they're expected to do. So they're gonna, they're given a periodic table. They're asked to comment on some of the patterns that are happening with the elements in the periodic table. So the first part, they're asked to identify two that have properties similar to helium. And then they also identify patterns of property shown and describe evidence. So when we looked at this, our chemistry teachers and even some of our Earth Science teachers are like, yes, they have a chance to do this. So when we looked at how they did, you know, their average score was 1.9 out of four, we're like, wow, you know, they should be doing better on that. So, you know, we looked at the question a little bit more. And then we realized that when we look at the target, they'll explain how properties of elements, location are related. We definitely do that in our classes. So we actually looked at the question a little bit more closely. We thought, yes, we, we cover this. But the thing that might trip them up a little bit is the two other patterns of properties. It's a little vague and we thought, maybe they didn't really know what that was. So in looking at it, we, you know, we do cover this. They have a chance to do something like this in, in our classes. But the way it was asked, you know, might have tripped them up a little bit. And just to remind you, in case you haven't seen one for a while, periodic table. As we know from looking at this for the past couple of years, reading and writing, especially the inquiry task, are very prevalent. So this task was called the throwing contest. And so what they needed to do was go, it was nine pages long and had eight questions, five paragraphs, a graph, four tables, two diagrams. And last year, I said a partridge in a pear tree, which I could say again this year. It's about that time of year. So, so there was a lot there that they had to do. And this does take what we would call stamina, you know, and I know it's a word that's been coming up lately with writing. So do they have the stamina to go through all this? And, and do they have chances to do this in our classes? It is actually nice, a couple of weeks ago, we had the on-demand writing task and they wrote for an hour plus. And I think that kind of thing is going to help. The whole change that we've been doing in the literacy in general, I think, is going to help with this. So they'll have more practice in this kind of thing. So it does break out the different things. The inquiry constructs basically are all the parts of the inquiry process. So basically, we just checked to make sure, yes, we do cover all those. You definitely see in some, they don't do quite as well as others, other parts of it. I do think a little bit when the students saw this, this is like one of the first pages, that even though it's supposed to be a content-neutral inquiry task, I, I couldn't help but when I see that, say, wow, that's physics. And again, a lot of our kids haven't had that physics class. So they might be a little bit going into it thinking, oh, you know, I'm not, I'm not so confident in this and I haven't had physics yet. So, and it's for a very first sentence, Mr. Nelson's physics class. So, so we do think that, that this particular year, that may have tripped them up a little bit. Every year, it varies, the, it's either Earth, they do have Earth Science or Life Science Inquiry tasks as well, this happened to be a physics one. And again, but when, where are our students taking physics? Mostly in 12th grade. And you'll see, we do have, we have some pop up in ninth and 10th grade. But we did, mostly it's in the 12th grade. That's been pretty consistent. So most of them are taking after the test. And the meeting I had last week, I said, okay, so when will the Next Gen? When's the thought going to be for testing for that? The, you know, we don't really know yet, but one of the ideas is that there'll be probably content testing at the end of 11th grade. But more engineering and process-based testing would be more local, as Joe referred to, that local testing, that would be more hopefully every year. So then we'd have more data to go on and look at progress of students.
Kelly, the meeting you're referring to is a state meeting?
Yeah, yeah, so I, yeah, I'm part of a learning team with the AOE. And we're trying to develop materials to help transition to Next Gen. And of course, every time we meet, I kind of bug poor Gail Hall and say, what's the test going to be? So these are the inquiry, inquiry constructs that I referred to that basically, you know, these are what kids are going to be, need to be able to, to do. And we have opportunities for them to do this in all of our core classes. They really start doing this ninth grade all the way through. So this was another thing, we looked a little bit more into that inquiry test just to see some of the questions. And we did notice that one of the questions they had to answer was to identify one change to the trebuchet that will increase the distance that it travels. Be sure to include evidence. And when you, they're supposed to look at those two tables. And when you look at it, there's 20 data points they're looking at. But as it turns out, the key thing is right here, that and that. So those are the two things that really would give them the most straightforward explanation. But we feel like, you know, they have a lot of other information that could easily distract them. So, so when we actually got to look at the questions that the students were asked, it does give us a little insight as to, you know, the kinds of things they might be thinking as they're taking it. They might be thinking about all those other data points when really the key things is the mass, the projectile.
And how long was the test?
It, did we set aside three hours for it? Yeah, three hours.
So they could have come to that task pretty late.
And this is at the end, yeah, yeah, yeah. So they're usually, you know, that stamina thing is important. So, so we have, we're in the process of, you know, keeping track of KNECAP at least for a couple more years. We have that testing for two more years. But in the meantime, we need to be aligning to Next Gen. So that's why I thought I'd give you an update about where we are with that. I'll save the mind spinning thing. So last year, I gave you this timeline- So last year I gave you this timeline for those, I think most of you are here, actually. And just to, just to give you, this was a timeline suggested by the state. And the good news is we're actually on task with it, so it's nice. In fact, I think we went a little further than I thought we would in our professional development. So last year, we had a lot of our teachers did a lot of professional development. Six went to the NSTA conference. Eight, eight of us worked in June. We did some work, mostly by core courses. We tried to look at specific courses and how our alignment is. And then we had, Joe actually was the teacher, he did an NGSS-related course at UVM. We had someone take a course about Lake Champlain that's aligned. And then I spent a lot of time in training, that was me with the forty-five hours, so. But I think at the end of forty-five, five hours, I finally felt like I might know what's going on, but there's still much to do. This year, here we are right there. So we're basically looking at our current topics, our current courses, and seeing how we do for alignment. And then we're seeing, well, if we don't have alignment, what changes might we need to make? And so we are coming up with models and basically trying to figure out which model might work best for Essex High School. So we had a consultant come in at the beginning of the year and helped give us some direction and some ideas for how to proceed. So that's where we're at now. With our alignment, we did find that, I mean, the good news is, we have most of the stuff covered. And covered and, you know, assessed, but maybe not exactly assessed according to the next gen, but close. But then these really are ones that we have, if we have, they're not really assessed in the way that next gen is asking them to be assessed. So this, I mean, it's pretty good, there's seventy-something, and we're, you know, that's, that's a great thing, that's great news. We don't have a lot that we have to do. Now, we were at a meeting and we decided to come up with, what model do we want to look at in terms of what would work best for next gen alignment at Essex? I think we were a little overambitious with this list, but it's a little daunting, because I look at it now and I go, wow. So no shocker that we don't have a model that works yet, because I think we have such a huge list. But it's nice to have a lofty goal, and I think as we go, we might decide some of these things may not be possible. So we've actually looked at seven models to date as a content area. Five have already been kind of, you know, cast aside, because they didn't quite meet all those criteria. These three actually came from the developers of next gen. And we looked at them, they certainly have some features that might be a good match for us, but nothing that was exact. And then we had a couple of teachers come up with four and five. And they were more of a semester-based model, which is, is a pretty big change from what we have now. So, so I think we're looking for something that maybe isn't quite that big of, big of a change. So about a month ago, we had an in-service day, and we came up with two more models. And the red indicates stuff that's different from what we currently have. So I call them model seven and model eight. So what we're trying to do is try to keep the spirit of our scope and sequence now, because we feel like we have a lot to offer students. But also to keep in mind that for some students, we, they, we have about fifteen percent that don't take four core classes. So one thing that was, this combined chemistry-physics class was one idea is how to help that fifteen percent achieve that. We are working a little bit with, you know, right now, we have earth science in ninth grade, maybe bio and earth science might flip-flop. And that's a little bit because some of the earth science topics are a little bit upper level for a ninth grader. So we're kind of, one model has it nine, 10 for earth science, bio, the other flip-flops it. And then there we have a little bit of differences with the credits. You know, maybe when we look at the actual number of things we need to do, do we want them to have a block class or a block and a half? You know, how much time do they need? So these are, we're, we need to work on these, this is just where the last thing that we've done. We do want to ask your opinion on something, so. The big, one of the big questions for us is, you know, do we really want to work on trying to make it a curriculum such that we're, you know, when we, if we are having standardized tests at the end of 11th grade, you know, how much do we want to compress things? Or do we want to keep our four-year curriculum, knowing that we probably will have, hopefully, those local assessments to go every year? So I think that, you know, before we go too much further, we would like to know a little bit more about if we want to kind of smush that, compress it a bit into three years. So, I mean, we talked about it at our last meeting. I think people had concerns about it, feeling like it was too much to do into three years, and that it'd be better to have a four-year span for the, give the kids time to develop as well, you know, not just.
Takes time.
Yeah, it takes time for them to develop.
Are you seeing that in other schools and other states and other places?
Yeah, everyone's kind of in the same boat right now as we are. I, the, one of the models for the, that the next gen developers was actually a three-year model. And they had, what they did was they took the earth science and put it into the, to bio, chem, and physics. That's how they were able to do it in three years. And I, so I don't, I haven't seen another school do that yet, but it just was one of the models that they. I think if we were to do, to do that, it would have to be more than three credits. We'd have to have, maybe a couple of years would have to be a block and a half. So it'd end up being maybe like a four-credit sequence. But you haven't seen anyone else trying to do that. A lot of the schools are in the same boat as, so you talk to another school and they're like, yeah, we don't know yet either. So I would say not really, there isn't really that out there.
So, so in the K cap universe, is there, is there a majority of, of test takers that are in physics? Or is there a majority of people that are like us that wouldn't have physics until, wouldn't have physics accomplished?
Yeah, I think most don't.
So why, why is it, why is it on the test?
Or why is the test when it is, is the other question, yeah. It's just, for some reason, that's when the people that are making that decision. I think they thought that if you try to test at the end of 12th grade, students may not be very invested in it. But, but yeah, yeah, why have it? Do I have it on, at the end of three years if most students haven't had it? That's a great question.
No, and so the, the next gen is following the same suit. We'll be testing for physics at the end of 11th grade.
As, as far as we can tell.
Physics concepts.
With the idea that they are, I think they're going to encourage schools to do local assessment also in 12th grade. So that could give you another chance to really assess that. So, I mean, the question is, how comfortable are we with, in some ways, the way things have been going for us? When we look at our K cap results, we know we haven't had some of it. Are we comfortable with what we see? Or do we want to, you know, try to change things a bit? If I go back to this model here, like imagine, you know, we're, would we want to do a chem-physics combo course for everybody? And then maybe just have two years of it? So at least kids can get junior year chem-physics and then senior year more chem-physics. You know, that's another, that's the only thing I could see from what we've done so far that could make that possible, so. But that's a, you know, the, the semester model, that would be a pretty big change for us to do it that way. But that's something that, if that were important, if we, if we really concerned with that score, you know, that could be coming from these models at least.
It's probably worth mentioning math and literacy common core are in the same situation. We have nine through 12 standards that are, that our state, unless they change their practices, are assessing in 11th grade. The good news is it's not fall 11th grade, at least it's spring 11th grade. But this is something that the math department is facing as well, a state accountability system that measures three quarters the way through a four-year delivery program.
One thing I always bring up is, I don't, I don't think it's valuable to compare our scores against Vermont. I would rather see our scores compared against comparable schools in the chicken county area that are similar to Essex High School in terms of their offerings. Then I can learn which, which schools apparently are doing a little bit better job. And I can go ask a specific question about, how is it you're doing this? Or how did your scores improve when these went down? So I'd like to learn from other comparable schools in our own region. I actually take the scores and then do that work from the state data. That's how I get a better feel for where other schools are in our region.
Yeah, we do, we've done pretty well, consistently well compared to other schools. Every year, there's a little bit of, you know, SCU might do better than we do, but yeah, but yeah.
We're pretty much on par with each other.
Yep.
So we're all doing basically the same thing.
Yeah, and the one that has done, that is consistently over all time, that I think we've only been ahead of once, was Stowe. And what Stowe, Stowe has a really consistent curriculum, and they're, they're, all their core courses are required. So they have, you have to take this, this, and this. So that's the difference that we have is, and they just don't have the number of electives we have, that's why. I mean, they only have so many courses, they're a small school. So that, but that could be, you know, that they, they have, I mean, we have three required credits, but not three required courses. They have three required courses, so.
Right, right, good point.
So I have looked at them, but then I realized, you know, we have, we have so many electives too, that.
Maybe we should cut back.
Well, you know, it is a question, you know, about how do we want to, you know, approach next gen? And whether we want to focus on the core. I mean, ideally, we want to do it all, which is why that list I showed you was so long. That's why, that's why that was so long. We're like, well, we want to do this and this and this.
Yeah, got it.
Any significant shifts at the K eight level?
Well, Amy is the person to ask about K eight.
The particle team has looked at this, no significant shifts right now. I, I'm, Mir, Kelly used this phrase last year, so I just don't want to trouble her. That they, like the high school, are both looking forward and looking back at the same time. We're now at an interesting place in that if we're, if this timeline proves, proves to be true, and we only have two more years of K cap, then we're at a point where only fifty percent of our students will actually be assessed on K cap. So we're trying to work with the classroom teachers right now, who have students that they're teaching who won't actually see science K cap. Our greatest challenge at K five, and I think you work here for the CCSU board presentation, you heard some, a middle school and an elementary school teacher talk, is that they're also experiencing new math and literacy common core at the same time. And they're trying to sort of make sense of that, so science is taking a backseat. We have the same consultant that's worked with Essex High School, now scheduled to go to each of those schools and begin to talk with them about it. So no conversation about significant shifts in terms of course sequences at this point. Still, like the high school, trying to make sense of what makes sense while we're keeping an eye, you know, on K cap. The consultant has really asked us at the K eight level to take a look at, you know, spend a little bit less time thinking about changes in content and focusing on the science and engineering practices that need to occur in those classrooms, and what it would take in terms of how that class would be set up, what would be the teaching dispositions, what materials would you need? So at our last meeting, they, they had a brainstorm list also, and it, it sounded like this. A big closet, where we could put lots of things, the teachers could grab toilet paper rolls, those kinds of things. So they're just beginning to have that conversation about what those classrooms would look like. Leanne has come and talked with them about kinds of things that are going on here, and I think got them kind of excited about. We are having some conversations about building some common tasks at the middle level between Essex Middle School and ADL, some common science tasks. But it's, it's a little bit hard to do that right now while we're, again, trying to sort of shift our thinking to that content and that practices and building assessments for it, without knowing exactly when it will be assessed in terms of a state level and what that will look like.
With the next gen standards, are the proficiency rubrics coming with it?
Well, that's the, the proficiencies have been through the educational quality standards, which the state came out with this past summer. They actually are pretty much the exact same. So if you, like, I guess we can decide as a district, I found out that we can decide to adopt them, adapt them, or come up with our own. They are pretty much, if you adopt them, you've pretty much got next gen right in there. So, which seems to make the most sense to me, that it's all kind of meshes together. The, with deciding what is proficient, that'd be up to our district. So we would have the, each of the proficiencies standards, we would then say, well. And they have eight for science, they have eight, and then they have broken, broken out into sixty-something for those eight. So as a district, we can decide, well, we want students to be proficient. We might have the eight be what is reported out on, and they would, you know, we could define the proficiency for those eight, so. So I think that the state will continue to develop some examples. I know Maine as a state is ahead of us in terms of proficiency, and they actually adopted, their science standards are pretty much the exact same. So those, you know, if we want more ideas in terms of rubrics, those probably, Maine will probably have those for us, so.
Do you think the challenge that you're hearing the science teachers wrestle with a little bit is how much do they organize themselves to ready the students for a single test? And what's the impact on the potential pathways, like the one that Leanne is providing for students? And trying to find, obviously, they want to do the, trying to find the balance to be able to support kids with that, but without limiting their options and their pathways and their electives. Because we do have a wonderful array of courses that support students and get them excited about it, you know, about science.
And as you start talking about the different models that you showed up for the science scope and sequence, you can't have that conversation also, without also talking to math and English and social studies.
Kelly, would it be possible for you to send your PowerPoint to Liz and go to my office so that we can include it in the minutes?
Sure.
As well as my team, and, and so we can post them on the web?
Sure.
For the board meeting, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Are we getting there?
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. That flowed nicely.
Yeah, that was, they flowed that very well for us.
They did.
And we can, in our future agenda topics, at the end, we can also discuss if there's follow-up or other items that we want to come back and address here. But to enjoy the moment of being exactly on time.
I was noticing.
Wow, that's amazing.
We can move to the.
Good agenda planning there.
We can move to the principals' reports. And I think Jack reminded us last meeting that the intention here is for the principals to report on any items since the publishing of their report. And for board members to have either earlier registered a question or to have a question about what gets communicated here at the meeting verbally. So why don't we turn it over to Bob first?
Which Bob?
It's me.
So new since I post, new since I submitted the principals' report and promised within the principals' report was a draft copy of the five-year focused visit that we at CTE have begun to write and will be hosting a visit team in March. We did our decennial about five years ago. The result of that decennial visit was a really clean, positive report. The five-year focused visit is about following up on any recommendations that the team made for us five years ago. So the, we formed two teams, the teams divided the standards. There are 12 standards, we have to report on 11. The process is to look at where we are in the recommendations and fill out a chart on progress made and any supporting information. Then also go back and look at the standards for accreditation for the whole school and have those teams evaluate ourselves based on where we are now. And so we, using the rubrics, say we either exceed, meet, or do not meet the standards as described. And as far as reporting out on the recommendations, we as a team have to report either completed, in progress, planned for the future, rejected, or no action. in-progress, planned for the future, rejected, or no action. Little bit of perspective, five years ago at the end of the decennial visit and report, there were 167 commendations found in the report, which is, I think, is exceptional. 121 recommendations and no requirements. To date, you will see, if you're interested, on page 26, two charts. We as a team have concluded that we have completed 94 recommendations, have 13 in progress, seven planned for the future, two rejected, and five no action. So at the halfway point, we are close to being 87% done with the recommendations. You can see those kinds of recommendations by standards from page 29 on. The last part of the report is to respond to very specific commission recommendations. So the recommendations I'm talking about are visiting team recommendations. They send that to the commission, the commission reviews those recommendations, and we are, we as a school get one meeting dedicated to reviewing us, and the commission then decides if there's any recommendations they would make following the decennial report. There were two recommendations made. You can see those on page 67 and 69, but essentially, continue to develop a school-wide assessment system that encourages the use of data to drive instruction and improve student learning is one of the recommendations. And the other recommendation was address all remaining facilities' issues. There were 22 recommendations facility, for facility issues. We've completed 22, are outstanding, and they are, they fall into the plan for the future, which I hope is part of the core planning team process, so. You would be proud of your team of CTE students who, teachers who completed that work pretty quickly. We'll come back together on March 9th to host the visiting team, who will be on property for hopefully a day, maybe a day and a half. Their main focus again is just to review the recommendations and where we stand on the process. I think that's all I have.
And you rejected the recommendations because, those two recommendations?
Great question.
Because?
Two recommendations that we rejected, one was a recommendation to seek facilities off-campus to allow for growth. And that was right at the end of the bond vote process, the building process. So I, I think I would have the board's support in rejecting that one. And the other one was a recommendation to build a teacher lounge. And I rejected that without, without support by the staff, although they all supported it too. I'm not going to build a teacher's lounge when we're looking for student learning space, so.
Thanks.
Bob, what's the difference between rejected and no action?
So no action for us, I think there were five in no action?
Five in no action.
Believe all five of those come out of a program that we closed right after the visit happened. And you could, yeah, I think it's out of the Business Academy recommendations. So we had recommendations for both the Business Academy and the ophthalmic medical assisting program. We actually answered all the recommendation of the ophthalmic program because that program was open almost three years after the visit was here, and they were really focused on enrollment and retention, and that's what we were working on for that program. So we were able to say, not only did we do it, but we completed all those things. With the Business Academy, since they closed right after the visit, there's no action on those. We didn't even have enough time to really work on them. So, and I think that's the spirit of no action, those, those are the things that should show up in no action.
Can you want else on the board, questions for CTE? Can you just remind me what the sequence is? You're at this stage.
We just finished the two-year report.
You just finished the two?
We submitted that October 1st. And after their two-year report, that's when they'll, you'll soon get materials for your five-year visit. Yeah, we're kind of... You'll get a letter, you'll get a letter from the commission saying, these are the recommendations we would make.
Right, okay, helpful, thank you.
Yes, sir. So we did, as was alluded to earlier tonight, we kind of shut down business on Saturday for an hour and a half opportunity for students to think and learn about the process of writing in terms of an on-demand writing exercise, which was, when all was said and done with the instructions that were delivered and the materials handed out, students had the opportunity to write for about an hour and 20 minutes in regards to creating an argumentative essay, which involved blushing, which involved reading.
Again.
Two pro articles, two con articles, to the question, should high schools eliminate competitive athletic teams, which generated some response and interest. And I'm gonna, I have one copy in the pack, and I'll start it with Aaron, you can circulate for the report, to show you the thoughtfulness that went into this activity and experience based upon the uniform instructions that all teachers gave, so that one group would not necessarily have an advantage or a disadvantage as compared to another, and talk about and explain to the students in terms of the process of writing and how one would go about a task like this. So what we've done since that day, yes. I should, I should note that we handed out blue books, for those of you may remember that in your college experience, the Blue Book Experience with pens, so that students were not using computers for this, it was the old-fashioned way because that's the only way we could get what turned out to be 1,090 students all involved in this activity. So we've collected all the blue books, and we're going to be taking samples of student writing across the board for the MLK In-Service Day, and to use our school-wide rubric to take some samples across all content areas and to start to calibrate and score so that there's consistency. Because as I mentioned in the report, good writing is not simply the task of the English teacher, it's everyone's responsibility. So that's going to be something that we really haven't done before en masse like this. My group that I proctored in that corner of the library had 22 students. The first student was done after 35 minutes, and there were two students that I had to tap them on the shoulder and say, time's up after an hour and 20 minutes. I had a group of students that were EHS, CTE shared, that were being proctored in the library, and just wonderful work ethic, stamina. We talked about stamina earlier tonight, that's a key factor, obviously, in many of the tasks that students were asked to do, and they really, they really rolled their sleeves up and went after it. So I just wanted you to have the opportunity to peruse the materials and see that. In terms of specificity of data, we have been looking at the STAR reader results, where this year we have administered the assessment to freshmen and sophomores, and science folks alluded to it, and we've just barely got to the first layer of the onion. We're also looking at, as you saw some of the sample questions, students' reading levels and reading abilities as they go about assessments like this, and how they, depending on their level of course, may really hinder or help their ability to be successful in these assessments. So I'll give you one data point, because there's, there's more to come at future meetings, but this is one that caught our attention. So we gave it to all freshmen and sophomores this year, and currently, that's 602 students, freshman and sophomore class, and we have currently this year 137 students, freshmen and sophomores, not on plans that are reading below the ninth grade level. So that's an interesting data point, that's going to be our benchmark, we're going to obviously peel the onion back and, where do these, who makes up these 137 students? Where do they come from? What supports are we going to have in place? What instructional strategies can our teachers use? Interventions that we can use in terms of EST, because since they're not on a plan, that's where they could and should fall. And the question is, how many have we already addressed through EST meetings? So leading towards the Edmond and Form, which will be more commonplace for the classroom teachers beginning next fall, this is exciting because we know what we know about the students, and we can start to get more in-depth background information and knowledge about how we can communicate to our sending middle schools, which includes the islands in Georgia, if there is any information that's significant to Dean over time, and also as important, if not more important, how we address the students we currently have in class with support and direct instructional strategies. So that's the one number that's somewhat significant. Interesting to note, when I was chatting with Erica Leclair, the literacy coach, that based upon the pilot Sback assessments that have been given, not just here last year, but across the board in terms of all the states, Sback has kind of sort of come out with a prediction that the first go-around of assessments, based upon the pilot, of course, as you may remember, the pilot was, students came into a couple of all-day testing scenarios, knowing they weren't going to get any results back, but based on the results that Sback got, and we didn't get results either, the prediction is that in terms of literacy, 60% they're predicting will be below grade level in terms of English Language Arts, and 67% will be below in mathematics for the first iteration of the Sback assessment. Now, in terms of the Sback math assessment, just for a moment, consider the following. The journey of a student to get to grade 11 takes many years, obviously, and there are courses that are held, but for example, Algebra I and Geometry, just used high school courses, we still have the same title of courses, but what's going to be covered and in-depth is different with the Sback Math Common Core curriculum as compared to past curriculum in terms of kneecap. That being said, we're flipping the switch this year and assessing on the new curriculum, which students have had probably one year out of their 11 years' experience. Now, it's not totally Greek, but it is a different, difference in terms of points of emphasis and depth of coverage depending on the classes. The other thing I can say, having attended a year's worth of meetings in terms of the Math Common Core in particular, is there are significant adjustments and modifications in the K eight curriculum, which also is going to play a big impact over time. So when we get to eight, nine, 10 years down the road, that's a different conversation, but to immediately, which is why I think they're getting that 67% figure that they've communicated. So teachers are working hard to get the curriculum modified where we've finished Algebra I, geometry, and now working on Algebra II in terms of curriculum realignment based upon Common Core standards and the changes that occur, that will need to occur, but it's still very much a work in progress. In terms of the English Language Arts, the complexity of text component is a significant ramping up of skills necessary, so that's something that we're also looking at as we go into the first iteration of the Sback, which, for your information, there's been great conversation, not only at this school, but of all the schools in the county, and Judy and other superintendents invited principals to attend a regional meeting, which is held at South Burlington Police Station last Tuesday, to talk about the Sback and the administration of it. And so we have agreed upon a window of April 6th, which is a Monday, through April 17th, that two-week window, to find a way to get students tested without canceling school, shortening days, you know, delayed starts, all that type of approach that has in the past been used for kneecaps. So that is something that I'll be sharing with our Sback committee, which, that was one of their proposals going into that meeting, a two-week window where we would just find a way to get our juniors tested. The challenge that poses, of course, is we don't have just a junior math class, we have juniors all over the place in math class. And English classes is not necessarily just a grade 11 English, because there are many electives that students can take. So we're going to work a way to get that schedule done, and also, not to exclude you, certainly Bob from Sback, Bob has really stepped up to the plate, I'd like to say, and this is talking from all Chittenden County principals, not just me, and has agreed, we'll do a sanity check after this, but he's agreed, he's agreed to test, which is, this is huge, which he's agreed to test at the center of all sending school juniors. So once again, that's, I think that's huge, and to have a common testing window, what that will ensure, or more likely ensure, is not a tremendous gap in the multiple testing windows that could occur and how his instructions for his students are affecting the impact. So that's kind of the, the update in terms of Sback and also the one key data point, which we're still in the midst of peeling the onion back in terms of the STAR reader test. We're going to be giving the STAR reader assessment at the end of the year so that we can measure growth as we move forward, and we, this is the first year we've tested two grades, so we'll have more to come on that, and more to come on what's the effect of reading, of the reading level impact in kneecap science, as one example, moving forward. So there's much more to come, but that 137 student figure is somewhat, ah, that was a...
Can I just clarify, that's 137 out of?
602.
602.
And those 137 students reading below grade nine level, not, those 137 are not high school.
And that's, that's 137, so some of those are sophomores.
Yes.
Some of those are in their 10th grade, and they're reading below the ninth grade level.
Which is concerning, yes.
Rob, do you have a breakdown on the 137 as far as sending?
That's our next task. We did look at it very quickly, and we did not, once again, there's more to come, but we did not see a great disparity from any school or another middle school in terms of, oh, the school has like a disproportionate number of students reading below grade level. It looked like at first blush fairly even in its distribution.
But that could, but that could actually be disproportionate.
Yes, but we, we haven't gotten the depth yet on that.
Do you have a plan for recovery, so they can recover and be successful?
That's one of the strategies, yes.
You do have a plan. Do we have resources?
Sounds like we're still in a data analysis at this point.
Well, yeah, we're working towards that. Credit recovery is one component of it.
Okay.
That's part of the MTSS multi-tier system of supports that we're, we're in the self-assessment mode right now, which we're going to get to Judy's office by Jane Mark.
Rob, you had a question.
Do you know if sophomore, did you test in the content area, or did you just test outside of?
English classes.
So it's possible that some of those were captured sophomore, pre-tech, CTE-shared, EHS students?
Possible.
But not all of them would have been represented. Be interesting to compare the data, because we're doing STAR reader in pre-tech, which would capture your EHS students.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
So we did news, is we're doing some local assessments and knowing where our students are falling and doing some analysis of that data now, so we can better plan and provide the interventions that will ensure that we provide students what they need to, to read at grade level.
Well, the Ed and Form, all of a sudden starts to now that data lives with the student, is accessible to the teacher, you have the formative assessments, you have differentiated instruction. It's one thing for the school to know about it, this all of a sudden starts to put it, you know, the Ed and Form is the, is the, is the whole thing that loops it back around to be able to make a difference about it.
That's an interesting point.
Yeah.
And for a real difference to occur, will be in the classroom, when the teacher, having that information at his or her disposal, before the kids even get there in some cases, which is going to be a huge, I think, improvement moving forward. In terms of the, a couple of takeaways from the plan assessment, a lot of charts, I'll just cover a couple of the highlights. We obviously have scored higher, which is no surprise, that's been traditionally the case, than the national average moving forward. As you look at the content areas, obviously, the more courses the students have had, the higher the score has been, so if they've had more math class... higher the score has been, so if they had more math classes and more advanced math classes, they're going to do better overall than if they had not, that's no surprise there. I thought it was interesting on the, the gender slide, that the composite score was exactly the same, and I think that speaks well to some of the programs that we have in place and have had in place over time, the women in science, you see the presentation that we ended tonight, the STEM work, and there is a, a great distribution, it's not, you know, male-dominated by any stretch of the imagination, so that, I was really pleased to see. In terms of some of the other interesting points that our students indicated on the assessment itself, they could have the opportunity to express areas that they feel as sophomores that they're going to need help with while they're still at Essex High School. And some of the areas that they indicated, which, once again, thank you for funding the Career Coach, exploring options after high school, thirty-six percent of our sophomores said that's what they are looking forward to get assistance on. Next, thirty-five percent improving public speaking skills, thirty-two percent improving mathematical skills, and thirty percent improving study skills. So those are the four areas that students self-identified that where they are sitting in October of their sophomore year at Essex High School, these are some of the things that they would like greater focus and assistance on as they matriculate through their remaining two and three-quarters of years, since this was given in early October. There's also a breakdown in terms of where they think their careers may be, but of course that, as you can well imagine, changes fairly rapidly and quickly. Other takeaways, career preference, once again, as I said, science and technology seems to be a big bump, which really reinforces to me the move we've made with STEM. I think that really speaks well for our community and our students and our families, that forty-two percent of our current sophomores feel that that's where they're going to end up, and it makes me feel good that we've invested resources in that area. Yeah, that's, those are some of the highlights of the, of the assessment. Interestingly, the, you know, the ACT have had a conversation with some of our students, in particular Student Government, where I can get a lot of students in one setting, in regards to the ACT assessment, in regards to a consideration, since ACT has been realigned for Common Core and Next Gen, if that would be the, from a student's perspective. From a curricular point, it was made earlier tonight, yeah, it is better in one aspect that juniors are taking it second semester, but if you talk to any junior, the second semester of their junior year is just fatigue in general, and in particular, testing fatigue, so not so much in terms of the motivation, if you will, for an assessment like this, but they, they obviously realize the importance. But my point back to the ACT, feedback from students is, especially seniors who are soon to exit and don't have a stake in the game, ACT would be much more, if that were a consideration that the state and the secretary, Holcomb, would, would entertain, would be much more of a motivating factor for the student, and I would tend to agree, and I'm not taking away all the, the good work that's come from, from Sback and Next Gen, but we need to ask our students, because they will tell us, and, and they do, they work hard and they put forth a good effort on these assessments, but for those of us that, you know, have had kids or have kids currently, that, that score on their ACT is really important as they look to gain college entrance. So, that's something that I'm working with students as well, to perhaps craft a letter to the secretary moving forward as a consideration.
Rob, did I hear that the plan test may have some doubt of its future?
Yes, it's, it's very, well, yes, this year was, the only reason we had planned this year is the Chittenden County principals and school counselors wrote a joint letter to the organization last, about this time last year, telling them that they were putting forth another product that was almost twice the cost and didn't produce the results, and so they extended us another year, and in talking with Mark Floyd, there's a consideration for another year, but we'll, we should know that in another month as to whether that's going to continue or not. So obviously, for budgeting purposes, it's, it's, it's in the budget, but it may be out of the budget if we find out they're not going to entertain us with that, because we find it very valuable. We've already had the parent-student counselor night in the auditorium, and, and great feedback from that engagement opportunity with students, parents, and counselors on the results. We've also had counselors meeting with all juniors in terms of the PSAT results that are going this week and last week. So, good information, and, you know, hope to have more, more information on the Star Reader as we move, move through the months ahead.
Is there any, any questions for either of the principals? Stanova, do you see any purpose for the principals to continue to be here?
Let me just check the agenda quickly. Do principals see any reason need to stay? Red discussion.
I guess one, two, one last thing I would like to say while Judy's considering that. We had visited earlier this fall CVU to talk about pathways, proficiencies, and personalization, and we've got a team leaving to go to Rutland High School tomorrow to do the same thing. The main reason for looking to Rutland is they have spent, their administrators with their teacher leaders have spent the last two years at the Marzano Institute in Colorado, and have not been associated with the New England Secondary School consortiums, and of course, we have been affiliated with any SSC and not with Marzano, so we're really looking forward for an exchange of ideas tomorrow, as a FYI.
Yeah, and this as a closing, the superintendents in the region are very appreciative of CTE as administering Sback this spring, because it does promote kids being in a testing environment they're familiar with, and it also ensures that program disruption is minimized, so, you know, it, it's a gift to all of the nine sending high schools and ops teams to be commended for that throughout the region.
I agree.
So thank you for noting that, Rob.
Well, unless there's any concerns or other issues, then I'd like to give the principals a chance to lead us. Your day starts early, your work is important, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good night.
And thanks for the coffee.
Yes, yeah. She was willing, she was actually willing to use a paper towel to filter the coffee if we couldn't find a filter.
Yeah.
You're welcome back, you know.
What's that?
You learn to welcome back.
Oh, crazy.
Thank you. Great, their next agenda topic is the RED discussion. Judy, I'm going to ask for you to, to tee this up, because I think you're, we're looking for a, a chance to sort of debrief and discuss and to better understand our role as the only union school board within the discussion process.
Right, so thanks for the opportunity to provide some updates for the U46 Board. Some, some of you were able to be there on November seventeenth for the joint meeting with Essex Town School Board, Westford School Board, and the Prudential Committee, the Essex Junction School Board. And that was preliminary conversation about forming a study committee, was the essence of the conversation, and at the time, we knew we were eligible, if we were to move forward, for two distinct grants, both a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, as an update, tomorrow night, all three boards are meeting again, and you're always welcome to attend, although not necessary, because it's really the formation of, of the K-8 into one district. So you're already a unionized high school, so the three boards that'll be involved would be the Westford Board, the Essex Junction Board, and the Essex Town Board. Essex Junction and Essex Town are required, so between them and connected to you, this would form a pre-K-12 Regional Education District, or a RED, and you have the number of students that you need to have to form that. Westford has been invited as advisable to the study to join in, because they're a member of CCSU, and all three boards will vote tomorrow night on a motion to form a study committee. So I'm not saying to form a district, I'm saying to form a study committee, and should they form a study committee, the two required districts would be required to vote, and Westford can determine after the study if they're going to bring that vote to their community. So down the line, that's how that'll work. And as far as the timeline's concerned, the grants and the tax incentives, which the first year, there's an eight cents tax incentive, and then it goes down by two cents for four consecutive years, so it's eight, six, four, and two. But I think the overarching reason to move forward with the study is to really talk about, which you heard a lot about tonight, which was that pre-K-12 continuum of learning, and what that looks like in a unified experience. So, they'll be meeting tomorrow night, and hopeful they'll move in that direction. We did learn that the grants are only available up until 2017, and the incentives, and they're only available for legal services and consulting facilitation work. So, that's been narrowed down, but altogether, there could be close to three hundred thousand dollars to help with the transition, should there be one. Each board of the three I mentioned will appoint one board member to serve on the study committee, and it, the study committee will be apportioned according to student daily membership, so there was some review of the ADM, and Westford will have two members if they choose to study, Essex Junction will have eight, and Essex Town will have ten, so it will be a twenty-member study committee. So that had to be identified within the motion tomorrow night, along with a budget request of twenty-five thousand dollars to be, to enter into the study to form the RED. At the November seventeenth meeting, Chris Leopold, legal counsel, to the study that was done back in two thousand, well, ended in two thousand seven, November two thousand seven, and Brian O'Regan, who facilitated that study committee, both were in attendance and spoke to the fact that, you know, the articles are the same, so a lot of the heavy lifting has been done, and through that, we're encouraged in hoping that we could possibly, if they decide to study, have a vote as early as the November election timeframe. So, we'll be soliciting community involvement through letters of invitation, and begin that process in the new year, if they choose tomorrow night to study, and I'll be happy to send out a note of their decision. I don't think it'll be too late a meeting, and you'll be able to know where each board finds themselves. At the November seventeenth, there was a straw poll vote, and Essex Junction and Essex Town were unanimous in moving forward with the study, and they are the necessary districts for the study to occur. Westford was split in its decision, but have met recently, and their straw poll, again, is favorable in moving forward to be part of the conversation and, and to see where they would fit into a RED. So that's the update for now, more to unfold tomorrow night, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
How was it determined it was necessary?
It's determined, it'll be determined actually by the study committee, but the two necessary districts in the past, when it was studied, are Essex Junction and Essex Town, because they create a pre-K-12 district in one community.
If the Westford vote went down, we would still form.
Right, right.
So, so if Westford were to decline the study, everything would just move on, and then just stay on the sidelines?
Right.
Right, right. But they could be invited back after the study was completed, to see if they would be still interested.
Okay.
So this is different than what happened with the Modified Regional?
Union, the MUD, the Modified Union School District with Chittenden East, that was consolidation within one SU, and because that SU had a union high school, there was a community that's a member of the union high school that didn't want to be part of the RED, so consequently they created a MUD, and...
It's the perfect name for this.
Doomed from the beginning.
And it's, and they had to do that to honor the fact that they were already part of the union high school, but it still has created some cloudiness.
I tried to discuss a couple of my concerns with this at the CCSU meeting, but we didn't get too far. I think the, the main concerns have been the one taxing unit, and, you know, we're looking at independent planning commissions in each community, different community goals. We don't have a community that's totally unified, and, you know, I, in thinking about it, the infrastructure, the potential infrastructure investments that have, would have to be made over time, could be significant, both from an Essex Junction standpoint, and it could be the replacement of the Essex Elementary School in Essex Town. Now, when you talk about folks wanting to pay for each other's school, and we're talking about significant new infrastructure dollars, I think we should be transparent with our taxpayers and our voters. I, I don't know what the plan or the opportunity will be for that transparency. That's really what we're talking about.
That's a great question, Alan, I, I forgot to add that, so thank you for reminding me. At the meeting, Suma Cormack also attended, and shared the importance of community engagement and, and communication planning, and shared a model for communication. And I think I don't want to give away Liz's steal of her thunder, but we as communications team, Matt, and when it comes to task teams, will update, but we know that from the last study, the committee held all, all the articles pretty close until they finished them all, so that, because as they visited and tweaked and whatnot, and I think when it was completed, it was too big and too in-depth for people to really wrap their arms around it, and there wasn't like a constant flow of what the information was, or an opportunity to understand why they concluded, what they concluded, and the transparency you're talking about.
They just were, the, the committee wasn't willing to commit to a savings, to, to put a plan out for the public to consider, and it, it sort of fell apart at that point. There wasn't that follow-through, careful. I'll tell you, the one concern that I had, had to do with the Marlowe Durham... I'll tell you, the one concern that I had had to do with the Marlowe Durham statement in the CCSU meeting, that since there would only be one tax base for the whole community, that it would be an excellent opportunity to replace all four schools in Essex Junction with a whole new school complex. That scares the hell out of me, because now we're talking 70, 80-plus million dollars, of which Essex Town taxpayers would be on the hook to continue to pay for ends numbers of years. And the paltry savings from this RED unification is, I mean, they're miles apart.
Let me just address it this way, because I want to move, I want to move. Our concerns as a board are, I think, valuable to the process. But our involvement is somewhat different than all the other boards. I also want to say that we have every opportunity to step out as citizens, individual citizens, and try to move our concerns forward. We need to do so, understanding that there can always be a perception that we're speaking as a board. So I think it's essential that as we form our opinions on this, because we're not an involved board, that we just make sure that we work in unison to inform the process. And individually, we just always make that clear determination that we're not speaking on behalf of the board. I think that, you know, asking for transparency, better communication, what are the lessons learned?
Pros and cons.
Yeah, and those are going to, those are going to be, I think, helpful observations by people that have got the T-shirt, been around. You know, we've seen this before. As a U-46 school board, I think it would be interesting to see if there is, outside of us as individual collective, as a school board, what is best for our students, best for our community, best for our curriculum, that, you know, we look to see if there's an opinion that we want to form as a board towards this. We won't be involved, we may be involved as citizens to be asked to serve on the RED advisory, but we won't have a formal board capacity at all in this process, unless we make one and we use it as an advisory.
Well, sooner or later, I've already been asked about four times now. People know me in the community and they've read the articles. And as I explained, I have a feeling I'm going to have to take a public stand as an individual, one way or the other, on this. But that's the only area where I have a major concern.
Yep.
Can I just add something to that? Is that I do find it premature, at this point, for people on the boards to be throwing multimillion-dollar numbers out when there have been, we haven't even talked about doing the study yet.
Yeah, we've done.
I mean, how we can suddenly talk about, in one town, I mean, I guess I'm just kind of perplexed as to where these numbers are even coming from. And they are very, they will automatically start to polarize and diverse, you know, to make it a divisive conversation.
That's why it's important that both.
And I'm all for transparency, absolutely. But I really see this study as the opportunity to try to get some actual factual information to then base this potential decision on. So I totally agree with that we do have to have, all this information is very important. But I just would advocate for not putting the cart in front of the horse, if you will. And I also did want to ask tonight, as a board, if we're all in agreement on doing this. I know that, you know, our board doesn't have a vote, you know, kind of as to whether the study happens or not, just by design. But I wasn't sure if it was appropriate for us as a board, you know, if we did feel that we were very much in support of the study going forward, if it would be appropriate to make, you know, some sort of a, I don't want to be super formal, you know, but maybe a statement at the meeting tomorrow night, just saying, you know, "U-46 Board, by definition of its role in the educational community in this area, you know, in our towns," you know, either advocates or doesn't advocate, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I would say, you know, advocates for the study to move forward. Because I do think that I would love to share that with the people that are going to be voting. Not that I'm looking to sway anybody, but I would think that, given our knowledge of kind of what happens with the educational community here and how I think it would benefit from that continuum. So I guess I would just ask you, Judy, and I don't even know if anyone on the board has interest.
I mean, I'll put out a proposal, people can react to it, and we'll see where it goes from there. But I would propose that we take a, we take a reading of the board by individual to see if we have a consensus in supporting proceeding with the study for a RED. That was not overly clear, but it got us to that point. And so to do the consensus, I would just ask for, if you're in support of that, to answer with yes. So are you, please answer now, or if you're in support of supporting the study to proceed, then yes. All those?
I would say yes.
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 I would only say yes if the information is out in the public and transparent to the public. And it's not. And people are asking questions about it.
So Al, your conversations may be ahead of where we are right now, but in a consensus of whether this board would like to be on record, not with a motion, but with a consensus, that we support pursuing a study of a RED in our community. Yes or no?
The condition I put on it is that I would like to know when this transparency is going to occur. And if we're not going to be transparent,
Then you would vote no.
I would not support this.
So we can't go into the future, and we're actually, again, I think you're much further than we are in that if asked yes or no, do you support the proceeding with a study of a RED? Your answer is?
Conditional.
Okay. So we'll communicate that we have five members that are in support of proceeding with the study. That information can be shared with our fellow board members in the other towns. And Al, I would ask you to write to us as a board, CC everyone, in a short, concise manner, what that condition is, so that it could be understood by us.
I just explained it three times.
I have yet to grasp it yet, so I'm going to ask you for my learning style. It would be very helpful for you, in a concise manner, to capture that condition in writing, so that we as a board can understand why you weren't able to vote one way or another.
Well, I've seen what Grant has done. I've listened to the discussion at the CCSU meeting. It's clear that there are some assumptions that have been made. And I think it's important that transparency be out there.
I look forward to receiving it.
One thing I would just like to add.
I'm not going to receive anything different.
I would just like to add, Brian, is, um, uh.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
All right. So I've asked you, I've asked you to assist us in understanding.
I don't have a problem with that. But I don't think I do, I don't know what I'm going to write any differently.
Okay.
That's it.
As I understand, the question we had before us here, and I support going forward with RED. But, and I also, having been there the night of the 17th, understand the legalese of what happened, that it's Essex Town and Essex Junction School Districts that by statute have the responsibility to do this. And U-46 is not part of that statutory situation. Nevertheless, U-46 brings a unique perspective that none of the K through eight districts have. And as a discussion, and I will, as part of my task team at Leaders at Work, we talked about this. And I think as, if the decision is made to go forward, there's certain language that I think we need to be cognizant of, particularly when we talk about care and education of our children, okay? The word "children" to me, in a K, in a school district where we have adult learners, okay, can be exclusive, not inclusive. We look at a K through 12 school district, we have pre-K, and we have post-12 educational programs that are involved here. And a voice I would like to make sure gets championed, at least heard in this, in this study group, if one is formed, is that we have adult programs, we have post-secondary school education programs that we, these things need to be factored in, as we go through this study group, and not just take a K through eight perspective per the statutory school districts that are being formed. And so you asked, what I heard you say, Brian, is what does U-46 want to do? I think there's a case to be made, we don't want our students to be disenfranchised when this kind of study goes forward. And not that I think that that would consciously happen, but I'm already sensing in some of the language that I'm seeing here, that it's, although unintentional, it may have consequences, and we have to be. We, U-46, have to make sure, and I don't know how to do that, I don't know if the discussion's going to go forward, but it's incumbent on this board to make sure that those perspectives are at least taken into consideration. That's.
I agree. And we do have a unique design. I mean, how many other districts in the state have a design like ours?
A supervisory union?
Well, but the fact that we have the union high school with the town, and then we have.
Right.
I mean, it does make us, it makes us unique.
Yeah, there's a couple. I think, I think what is an important clarification is that this is a governance study. And I think people get confused between school consolidation conversations and a governance study. And so what we're trying to do is, or what the study question is about, is to say, would we eliminate a town-school district and possibly two-town school districts, Westford and Essex, an incorporated school district, which is Essex Junction, and form one RED, Regional Education District, which would then have the U-46 Board dissolve. So it wouldn't, currently, we have three different forms of governance right now, which complicates voting and talk about lack of transparency in this kind of a structure. So the question is, what is a pre-K-12 school governance model look like?
And curriculum is obviously, curriculum is a huge part of it.
And that's a huge centerpiece in it, yeah.
Well, I thought it would just be all boards would dissolve, it would just be one board.
It is going to be one board, if it moves forward. Yeah. But it eliminates those three different forms of governance.
Right.
There is an element in the question, though, Judy, isn't it, that asks about whether outcomes will be improved or not improved? And, I mean, it is a governance, but what we do as far as a mission is viewed, and what that governance will do to that mission. We being sort of the, one of the products of the mission.
Absolutely. So the efficiencies that they're looking at and effectiveness comes from eliminating an SU, which no one would have ever created intentionally, and having one district that ensures curriculum progressions and continuity and, you know, those pieces, what comes from having one? Than instead of having this fractured and disjointed system that currently is in place. So, you know, I think, I know, all students would be considered and all of the schools and communities that choose to participate. And, you know, once the decision's made, just to enter into a study to see what we can learn about this, and to get the factual information available in a timely manner, I think will help in that there's a lot that has changed since the 2005, '06, '07 year is when it has been studied before. And so it's time to refresh that study, the findings from that. And also, the incentives, the tax incentives and study grants that are available to us, were not available at the time. So, you know, there's, you know, it's just a question of, I think Suma Cormac asked it well. And she said, I think it's a question in your community to ask, what time is it? Like, is this the time? And why would it be the time? So, you know, tomorrow night, the three boards will grapple with that. And, you know.
And I think as you're there at the table, we'll be at other tables. I think Jack's point is just that the vocabulary we use will establish tone, direction, other things in that we are a community of learners, almost more than you see in a normal situation, just because we've got, you know, Skill Tech is a huge population that we serve, and that serves the state of Vermont. It's one of the primary adult workforce retraining systems. Great. We are going to move into task team updates. So are we, are we, I guess we're going to, we're going to have a task team update for communications, or should we wait for that?
We do, because it actually kind of follows nicely.
Yep.
And Liz was in attendance, so.
Yeah, so we had, we talked about reconfiguring the communications team moving forward to include a representative from Essex Town. As we talk about how we're going to communicate to the community, everything from the beginning. We, it actually already started, Al, with the reporter article. And there was somebody from the reporter there who documented the first meeting of this group, which was that one we, most of us were at. We talked a lot about being very intentional about the outreach and the communication, and how much sense it made to include somebody from the town on this communications piece. I talked to Kim Gleason, Chair of the Town, and her idea was to attend the next communications meeting with a board member. She had one in mind from the town to attend that meeting. And hopefully, that board member she has in mind will be comfortable with being part of this team. And she will step away from the communications team, and this board member will step up and be included in all of this as we move forward, which everyone in the room that night, I think, was really, felt really, was, made a lot of sense as, in terms of communications. And just to say that that reconfiguring, I think, is really important. That voice is really obviously important to have as we message. And it's already been clear tonight and today how important the messaging is. So this team is charged with some of that, not all of it, but some of that. So I think that's really, for now, what we decided. The next communications meeting was supposed to be tomorrow, but the vote is taking place tomorrow night. So we've yet to reschedule that meeting. We will invite that town representative to be part of that, and then we'll report back after that, as soon as that happens.
As it lifts that weight during the course of the study, does it, do you plan on also expanding the membership?
On the communications team? I think so.
Yeah, to non-board members?
Right, I think, I think, I mean, we.
Makes sense, it's a lot of work.
We know it's a lot of work, and we know that the more people we get involved in doing that outreach and communication, the more effective it'll be. And it will help with the transparency. We talked about all the kinds of things we can do in creating the Facebook page and the event and all of places where this information can live. The detailed information about what the study group is doing, parallel with the community outreach, which really needs to be thought of, we think, more as bullet points out to the community and a much more abbreviated version of what's happening, where the people who are really invested in the study will also have reports that will be accessible on the, but won't be what we use to blast the community, because it'll be, it'll have too much detail. So there'll be parallel tracks of communicating, making sure that all of the data, all of the information, everything we're learning is accessible at the same time that we're messaging to the community in a much more abbreviated kind of way. we're messaging to the community in a much more abbreviated kind of way.
Uh, that was one of the things I think was missing in the first two studies. I mean, I ca- I went out and campaigned for years, years, at least four or five years to try to get this community to unify. And, and it, it, in a vacuum, coming down to a decision without communications. And in fact, remember the Regional Technical Academy? When that PR person came to our board member, I, I asked a question. If the person on the street doesn't understand the issues and the importance of voting for that, supporting it or not, whatever their decision is, it isn't gonna get passed. And-
The good news now is now we have social media, like never before can we communicate-
You've got an opportunity here to really be transparent with this process and to keep everyone informed. And that's really all I'm saying.
I think it's a priority for everyone on that, on our team, for sure.
Yep.
Anything else?
No.
Policy, Gary?
Yeah, policy, we did not meet in November, there was not gonna be a representative from each board. Um, so, and then the month before that, we did a couple of things. Um, ones we had, and I don't know what you call them, the webmasters, what are you calling? Um, we, they had a good discussion with us in terms of, uh, making our website and policy just a readable site. Um, so we actually had some suggestions for them, they were to come back, uh, and talk to us, but I actually made a decision not to have the policy meeting because not enough people's gonna be there to hear what they had to say and I think it was important to have everybody there. Um, so, and then the other thing we're doing is we're trying to streamline, as usual, J policies, here just too much redundancy, things probably no longer applicable, so we kind of, uh, give ourselves homework and go through the J policies and see what could even be do away with, what can consolidate. Um, I think we have a meeting come up Wednesday.
Mm-huh.
Um, so, and I did talk to Paul earlier today and we're gonna try to get the web people back in and work that until January, so that's what we're doing.
Gary is Chair of that committee.
It was not a hotly contested decision.
Their campaigning was all fair?
Yes, it was.
No public contributions?
No, I'll still take them.
And then, um, leaders at work? Can you-
Yes, I'll report out on leaders at work. We did have a meeting on Wednesday, the tenth of December. Uh, I call your attention, just looking at the org notes here, if you can, you, you'll see, uh, a couple of things, uh, aside from the superintendent's mid-year formative assessment, the evaluation tool and written feedback. But if you, one of the things that we've asked to do to help in the superintendent evaluation process is that so much of the topics that are being evaluated on refer back to meeting minutes in org notes, et cetera. So if you take a look at, for example, communicate, the, the communications bullet, when it says next meeting's TBD, and then in parentheses, it's, uh, the annual work plan communication standard to communications and collaboration. So if you take that, that particular communications element and then you map it back to the five different standards by which the superintendent is evaluated-
Mm-huh.
It, it gives us a traceability back when it comes to both formative and summative assessment of the superintendent that says, yea and verily, this was the topic, this was a topic, here's an artifact of that particular topic, um, did it meet, it meet expectations, exceed expectations, et cetera, and it helps in that, in that, um, criteria.
From one to five.
Exactly. So, so you'll see that the, the org notes have taken a little bit of a different flavor. I think this is maybe the first time since the last, this is our first U forty-six meeting since we've asked the superintendent to implement this, but you'll see how these, how these, how these topics relate back to the annual work plan. And then when you look at the annual work plan, which you'll find is part of this month's, um, org notes, that for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, the superintendent evaluation draft here, I have it printed two up, um, but for curriculum instruction and assessment, the areas of that we do evaluations on, equity, safety and climate, leadership, policy, those standards are called out with the elements in those standards and this helps trace back to what's, uh, what's going on here. So we've been spent, it, it took a little bit of work on side leaders at work to make that happen, but, uh, I think it's going to be helpful in us when we do superintendent evaluation. So, so just one thing for you guys to know, the second thing about leaders at work is, is that we're in the cycle right now of doing formative assessment for sup- the, for the superintendent. Um, again, those, the annual work plan shows the things that we, we are, will be working with on, for a superintendent's, uh, formative assessment. We had a detail, and I can make these, I'll give these to you, Liz, as part of the assessment. Um, for example, when you take a look at, uh, let's call it-
Any elements?
Pick, pick, pick an element, any element, you know, that's, that's defined here. So for example, the, uh, of course, I'm stuck in pages here. If we look at, at leadership, okay, for, for this particular year, leadership, uh, has been defined as what's in standard four, element one. So you go to your superintendent evaluation four, you see standard four is instruction, element one administers the development and maintenance of an educational program designed to meet the, the needs of the community, okay? So if that's the standard and that's what the metric is, um, what, what are these things that A will see in our org notes and so forth, but B, what has the superintendent provided as artifacts for that particular, uh, element? So right now, for example, during formative assessment, uh, what we reviewed last Wednesday was, there was, uh, for, for this particular element, uh, of administering the development and maintenance of an educational program designed to meet the needs of the community, we're talking about, uh, the data system, the local assessment plans, long range implementation timeline, CCSS, uh, Sback administration, the evidence of, if those are what the measurements are, the evidence was, um, uh, ODW, I'm trying to, what that?
On-demand writing.
Oh, on-demand, on-demand writing assessment that we heard from, from, uh, Principal Reardon tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, the CCSU student data system, uh, ELT minutes, of the budget work that we're, that we're about to commence on, um, so I, I won't, I won't belabor it too, too much because this is a task team update, but this is the work that's been going on at leaders at work, so. Any questions?
No, it's good.
Okay. And Liz, what I'll do is, I will, uh, as the org notes call out, as part of formative assessment, which is going on right now, it's due back to the superintendent in January.
Okay.
Um, uh, please review the attached standards that are in your org notes and this is incumbent for each and every board member here, uh, and what the evaluation tool, which is included here, and provide written feedback to Mark Dropa right now, Mark is part of the leaders at work, represents, who's, who's representing Westford here, to inform the superintendent's mid-year formative assessment that will be reviewed at the January SU meeting. I recognize we're having this conversation on the fifteenth of December and the January assessment is, uh, or the January SU board meeting is not very far away, so, uh-
January thirty-first.
Well, I, no, the, the January SU meeting, I forget what the exact date is, but it's, uh, I wanna say it's the twelfth or-
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-fifth, okay. So, so, uh, there's, there's time, there's time for us to all look at the data that's here, um, provide information back to Mark. Mark's gonna help, uh, pull all the, the information together from U forty-six, from Westford, from the Prudential Committee, and, uh, inform back to the superintendent the formative assessment, okay? Makes sense?
It's fine. Great job.
It's, 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 it's good work that's going on in leaders at work right now. I actually, um, they're looking forward for your participation, Brian, in, in this group as, as being board chair, um, so.
So you're gonna send me that?
I'm gonna actually give this to you.
Oh, you're gonna give that to me?
Unless, unless Superintendent DeNola, do you have this and is it an electronic form that you could provide?
I do have it in electronic form. It was a draft that I shared with leaders at work last week. So they gave, leaders at work gave me some good recommendations. Okay. And some of the evidence I provided, I provided, um-
Yeah.
In paper. And what I wanna do is go back and create links now so that you, you're not flipping through paper to see the, you know, you can just click on one and see the evidence. Yep. Um, so I, I wanted to have a little bit of time to tighten it up, but you have the tool in- In the org notes. And you have the work plan and you have the standards. Okay. So you'll see what the standard is and then you can just jot down evidence you've seen, um, of that for LMAs.
So the boards, our board's work of feedback to Mark is able to be done with the materials we have in the org notes.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Yep.
Yep, good. Okay.
Um, so, so just to, to wrap this up before we go on, Liz, let me just at least give you the hard copy. And I recognize that, that there's some, some, it's draft vote and there may be some modifications, but nevertheless, for meeting minutes-
It'd be helpful-
You can probably get it in a scanner or something.
To give you the feedback, so Mark's only getting it from one source instead of-
Great point. So, um, why don't we do that, just so Mark isn't kind of-
And getting from all sides and knows it's some transmission time that he's got the collective.
Why don't you send me your thoughts? We'll close that down one week before the SU meeting.
Mm-huh.
Um, which would be-
January twenty-sixth.
So that by the nineteenth of January.
By the nineteenth of January.
We'll have our comments to you and then you'll send them to Mark.
Yeah, and it's when you write that down there, does that get into the?
Yep.
Great.
Yep.
Could be a technology yet, paper yet.
You know, I am-
Old school, new school, right?
I've got all schools covered over here.
Okay.
Well, Judy needs a scanner.
I have a scanner, but I don't need it, I, I, we don't, I don't need it. I'm good.
Um, okay, next, uh, agenda topic is the CCSU board. Um, a primary aspect of the, of the board's work up to this point has been the budget. Try to, try to get a tentative budget approval before any of the budget sessions begin with the board, so we're working with a kind of quote-unquote a known number. Uh, so the November meeting that we had, which preceded the community me- meeting was, um, to adopt a tentative budget. So i- in short, this information's all in the board website, you can see the various numbers of, um, that have transpired over time. In, in short, because of the changes in algorithm primarily services, shared services going in different places, um, because of population need, um, the U forty-six budget looks like there'll be very little impact, um, from the CCSU budget. So that's good news.
Yeah.
Um, I think a primary discussion topic that we're probably putting after all of our budget sessions, when it gets, you know, that, that quiet day in the spring, um, we'll pick up and really start to understand more about our centralized food service and how that works.
You know, I did have a question on that. Um, and it seems to me it was sort of a guesstimate rather than the actual numbers, uh, for the charge for food def- it's not a food deficit, but it was the delta. Um, is, are there any plans to try to get to a hard number, the, the real data?
Um, well, they're, they're, okay, go ahead.
Is this, is this a CCSU board question or a U forty? I don't know, this question needs to be addressed in this board.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, I think it's a, I think it's a great question we need to ask at CCSU.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that we're being charged, because it comes back to our budget.
And I think we will, I think we'll see that when we do our budget development.
Okay.
We may have that data come back to us as we do U forty-six budget development and, and our share of, our share of what goes into CCSU. But I, 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 I wanna postpone, I would suggest postponing the question-
Yeah.
Because it's more appropriate for a CCSU.
Yeah, and I think we'll, we, I think we will be, um, coming over that topic during our budget sessions.
Okay.
Um, there was one other element, the substantive assessment, summative.
Summitive.
The superintendent's assessment was completed for FY fourteen, um, at that November seventeenth meeting, um, so that was wrapped up and completed.
Carrie?
That brings us to-
Conference?
VSA, VSBA Fall Conference. Um, I'll ask myself to, um, so I attended that this year, this is self, I said. Um, this is my first year that I actually attended the conference. Uh, I found it, um, you know, you know, one of the most impressive moments of any educational experience for a board member or a parent is to see our students. And, you know, fortunately, they began the whole process with some students from, um, actually the shared school in, between Nor- Norwich and, um, and, um, New Hampshire. But, you know, just the skill and talent is impressive. And then they speak or you, you interact with them and the maturity and the level is, you know, just outstanding. So that was nice grounding, because the rest of the conference was somewhat discom- you know, disequilibrium. Um, it is such a time of change and, and it is, um, more and more hard data, research and experience is telling us that the, the legacy in which we are, um, either choosing to be in or trapped to be in when we take a look at education is just not serving our, our learners well. Um, that the, the jobs, the careers and so forth just are, we're just are not based in the legacy, but much more future. And some really, the, the speaker, uh, tag, was it? My-
Bill Daggett?
Daggett, um, was fantastic and, and agitating, you know, agitating of that status quo, uh, which was enjoyable, but it, it does leave you in that sense of, um, uncertainty, but I've gotta tell you that I am, um, so pleased to be a member of U forty-six and know that we have staff like we saw this evening, um, doing things like making hands and working in our fab lab and, um, understanding that the twenty-first century is asking us to, to really step forward, so. Um, I can only imagine in schools that have, you know, more difficulty with resources and difficulty with student populations, giving scope and so forth, I can only imagine the challenges seem even more daunting, um, than what we experience.
Let me just pick up on that theme right there for a second though, Brian, in that, um, I've had the opportunity the past two years to be a judge at the Vermont State Science Fair at Norwich University, which typically happens in about April, and it's an opportunity for students all over the state to come and, and show, um, exactly the kinds of, the, where their interests are, where their, uh, talents can take them with the limited resources that the schools, in some cases, limited resources that the school can do. Uh, if, if, I, I strongly, strongly suggest, if you have the time and interest to go to Norwich in April and see this Vermont State Science Fair. Yes, we'll have students from U forty-six there, but, but, um, as we look kind of globe, uh, more globally at the state level, how are these investments made and how does it manifest themselves in, in ends to our students? You will be dumbfounded with the work that those kids are doing. I mean, it's awesome.
Yes.
It's awesome.
A lot of high-quality work.
And, uh, it just, it kind of brings back to, Brian, to your point, we as, as, as leaders in the educational system, as we struggle with, um, um, you know, governance and guidance and, and making decisions, not losing sight of the fact that those kids, and I, and I hear you say the, who, who presented at VSBA also, it's just, it's, it's amazing what they can do, so.
Yeah. So it was very good. I, I think it, you know, I think even looking at our board calendar and schedule that we should be, we should be looking to, um, you know, if somebody needs to be lighter on a meeting schedule so that they can work, um, a conference like that in to an overall sort of portfolio of volunteerism.
Yeah.
Um, I think we should be looking at that. I mean, I know myself that, you know, that it, it could be the pot of gold conference where they give, you know, something away to every participant, and if it happened in January, when I already have nine school board- And if it happened in January, when I already have nine school board meetings, I'm not going to attend that conference. So I understand we compete very hard on our other parts of our lives. Um, but I would like to kind of plan early and often that if we need to lighten and give somebody that kind of space to be able to commit to that, it would be great. It's really valuable to, to meet other people in the, in the process. And sharing it with the superintendents, I think, is brilliant because it really does put a lot of the conversation right there. Into the consent agenda, um, is there anything that someone was just to remove from the consent agenda? No? And may I have a motion to approve the?
I think there, um, I don't know if it's, it's a move or amend the consent agenda. We received an additional letter for consideration tonight, or is that something that's handled separately?
It's included. I think that she just wanted to make a point of you receiving her letter personally.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. So.
But they're all in here, all of your letters. And I don't think she knew that, you know, we would include all the letters of resignation in here, so.
Um.
So you need a motion?
Yes.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion.
As, as.
That includes?
That includes the approval of the warrants, the approval of the meeting minutes.
Of October twentieth, November thirteenth. You have to actually have all of that.
Specified.
Specified in, in the consent agenda for the auditor.
So let me rephrase my motion then. I, I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of the warrants, the meeting minutes of October twentieth, November thirteenth and November seventeenth, uh, attached approved letters of retirement, or approval of letters of retirement and request for support activity.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Well, actually, there wouldn't be any on the consent agenda.
I wonder if the letters of retirement have to have the names for the minutes. They're getting kind of picky about this thing.
They are, and they do. You should name.
Okay.
It is that detailed now.
Okay. Name them for the minutes or name them for the motion right now?
Both.
Okay.
Um, so.
So, so the letters of retirement, Jay Brady, Diane Flattery, Peter Huber, Carol Lacy, Kevin Martel, David Polison, Gloria Reinstein, Susan Soltau, Marcia Spinner and Karen Sadowski were retiring on, at the end of their contract of June two thousand fifteen.
Are you good with that as your second? Okay. So we've clarified the motion. We have a second. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And so with, um, future agenda items, first I'd like to contain it to, um, topics and information that we heard this evening. Is there follow-up? Um, or additional information anyone wishes to request? Um, or have the board consider requesting, uh, from administration with regards to tonight's meeting?
There's, um, I know Rob said that they were going to go over all that thousand-plus. Would that be ready to discuss by next board meeting or do you think that that would not be enough time? I mean, I would like to hear the results of that. I don't care if it's next board meeting or one after that, but I don't want to put them under any kind of a gun and say, oh, we want it, because that's a lot.
So I think I heard him say they're going to go through the thousand-plus writing, um, and to create a sample of those. And then apply them into the rubric and they were going to use the Martin Luther King in-service day. So that would be mid-January, probably going to put us past all our budget sessions. We could look at, do we have a meeting in February?
February sixteenth.
So we could, we could ask his reaction whether he'd be prepared by February sixteenth. If not, we'll move on to the next one.
For the results of the writing on demand. Yeah.
Brian, one thing that occurred to me tonight was, um, just as we're moving into the budgeting discussions, um, when we were listening about the, uh, getting the information on the library and the usage of the library and rethinking the library, I thought that was a pretty big number of requests for the lab that had to get denied.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was about a quarter of the total, right?
Seven seventy-six for usage, ninety-seven.
Okay, so it wasn't a quarter. But I mean, that was, I thought that was a lot. Maybe, maybe it's.
A hundred students, yeah.
Yeah. And that was, but she, now she said the first number, the seven hundred something though, was class. It was seven hundred and seventy-something. I think that was.
Class requests, yes.
So I was wondering if the ninety-seven were denied class requests. I mean, that's a lot of.
Maybe we could ask, um, for our, again, we have unusual meetings in January where the org notes really don't exist.
Mm-hmm.
We'll have, if we have any kind of special, but maybe what we can ask is, um, a little bit of a deeper dive into the stats of the media center, media.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, what I want to do is come back and say, is that going to work for you for budget? Or would you like, so we'd be getting the stats dive after we finish the budget? Or would you like it before?
Well, I was thinking, because that, Judy, that's this space here.
Yes.
Okay. Because I, I was thinking that it might be important for us before we discuss the budget to understand if there needs to be more resources in that area, but maybe getting some perspective on, is that number going down? Like, I don't have any perspective on that number. Is it going down?
So we might be able to say, um, by the second, because usually we have two, two entities overview first night. Second night, we do one. Third night, we do the other. So by the second night, to have a little bit more of the usage and possible resource needs.
Yeah, and maybe clarify just that, that those two numbers, the first one, I believe she did say was class usage. Maybe we just want to clarify that that second number was that as well. I mean, it must have been, but.
And this might also, as they do that, they might inform us and let us know a little bit how the minis are working here. Remember in the budget, we put in minis and.
Right.
Um, but there's also been a sense that we've undermined them because it, I know that the first request ended up getting reduced last year.
We might need to max their minis.
We might need to max them. Um, on other items from this evening, I also did promise that at the next, um, board meeting, we would, we would, um, display once again all the committee assignments. And any follow-up, and we have our follow-up assignment with the superintendents.
Yeah.
Okay. So with tonight wrapped, going in again, knowing that we're going to be a little busy with budget, um, are there budget matters or information that we'd like to make sure comes to us in those January, uh, starts January eighth, I believe, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, yes. Anything particular or?
We may have already talked about it, but, um, as far as budgetary, you know, it seems like we had quite a few, um, retirement requests coming from senior teachers, sadly. Um, so I guess, are there any budgetary implications as far as salaries and maybe how that works?
You'll see that staffing.
We will. Okay, it'll automatically just be, okay.
Staffing updates, yeah. How that will be allocated in your enrollment projections. Um, the one thing I would add, um, there's maybe a CPT update at your February meeting.
Okay. So core planning team for the appreciative inquiry summit to occur in June, we can give an update at, um.
The February meeting.
February meeting.
January fifteenth.
January fourteenth meeting.
Fourteenth meeting will have already occurred.
When is the, when is the board's next meeting again?
February, I don't know. Well, your first budget work session is Monday, January fifth.
Okay.
And then Thursday. It's every Monday and Thursday.
Okay.
But you have your core planning team meeting in there as well.
On the fourteenth.
Okay.
Yeah. One thing we're not doing this year is having a board meeting. We're having budget sessions only in the month of January for U forty-six.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's my first session I have here.
Are you all set?
Yep. I think that is it.
Well, no.
Oh, you have more? Okay. Yep. For a budget or for a general topic in February?
I think it's for budget.
Okay.
The single pair healthcare, I believe, comes into effect January one, twenty sixteen.
Um, the, I mean, there's multiple things that have come into effect, but with regards to the school district, um, we have one of our, one set of our things that isn't grandfathered, right? It's in there.
Right.
So is that what you're talking about? The large employer, non-grandfathered? Because the rest of them are twenty seventeen.
Right, you're grandfathered. There's one district that's not.
Yeah.
But it won't affect you. Um, so you'll remain with Visbit.
Visbit through twenty seventeen unless there's a change.
Right. And their number of increase has been released and so it'll be four point five percent.
Okay. Because this thing has got real implications for employers.
Mm-hmm.
And I was looking at school as an employer.
Yeah.
Uh, how you would be exempted is an important topic.
Right. That's where that, um, VSA, VSBA conference talked a lot about healthcare and staying with Visbit, um, until some of that settles out.
Yeah.
So we're fortunate to have a healthcare provider for us for schools.
Now, uh, where do we stand with our legislature desert?
That hasn't been scheduled yet. That was something communications was going to do. Um, so we're going to have to just talk about, you know, where some of that.
Because the legislations, legislators, they're having to go January one and they're going to be pretty committed, tied up. So I think there are a lot of issues where they could help us.
Yeah.
We've got that dual enrollment thing and it's a big piece of the budget.
Yeah, it's, and this year coming up will be the first time it's part of the budget and then the next year it will double, right? Because it's fifty percent.
Right.
And then it's a hundred percent. You're right, yeah. Those, that, that issue.
Yeah, it's another issue to, you'll hear where we find ourselves with those costs.
I'd also like to, you know, in that process of having that like clear need that the desert may function for relationships, but if we have clear questions to ask our legislators.
Well, yeah.
We could pose those and also meet off of board meeting schedule potentially to, to have a conversation that says, you know, these, these things are, these have an impact. In fact, we could even ask Grant through the budget process to really quantify some of these impacts. Um, because that might make more.
Yeah, he'll be prepared to share that, but that's a great point. You know, I think those legislative desserts, um, don't give you really that opportunity as a board to have those direct contacts.
Right.
And, uh, for example, Tim German attended a PC meeting and Paul Dane attended, um, the last PC meeting.
Hmm.
So, you know, they're interested in what those, Paul being a new.
Yeah.
Um, representative, uh, very interested in what the, um, uh, unfunded mandates were and some history on that and its impact. Um, has scheduled a meeting with Grant to learn more, so.
Al came across, I think, the, the sweet spot of an issue that's so U forty-six only.
Yes, yes.
To talk about this dual enrollment and talk about these credits and where that.
These unfunded mandates, my gosh.
That one alone is just such a sweet spot for us.
Yeah.
Um, and that would be great to, to pre-inform them that that's what we want to talk about. So they're not kind of caught and we can speak and we can, we can tell them from, Grant can tell us what that really, that true dollar impact is.
So once you get grounded in your budget during January, you might want to consider extending an invitation at your February meeting.
Yeah, and the Mondays would be better than other days.
Yeah.
I, I just want to go, I, I haven't got it through my head yet, but what is the law that grants us grandfathers, that actually makes us exempt from an employer requirement?
I think it's ACA compliance, but let me follow, I don't want to speak without.
I just want to make absolutely sure that we don't get hit with a huge bill.
Yeah. I will send you that.
You know, it's like, we don't need surprises of those magnitudes.
Yeah.
It's one of, the law is also one of the things that is limiting us to the maximum, um, copay that we can place upon our employees was from the date that the law was passed to the date that we're out, we only had a six percent window that we could, wasn't it? Something like that, six, uh.
Two.
Yeah, maybe it was six percent. Maybe it was six or something percent of it, but it was two. So there's a number of elements that have been bringing us to a date in which
Yes.
we're no longer exempt. And that was, that was one that was in collective bargaining.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But we'll have.
But that again could be something during budget we can update you on with the exact law.
Yeah, I think it's important. I just don't want to lose sight of it, uh, because it could be an interpretation of law here and.
And those I, I look for, that there'd be, I mean, my means again for delivering that information asynchronously,
Mm-hmm.
having it available and then having a period of time where questions could be asked so that we're sort of, we're learning on the outside and discussing on the inside. And try to limit the amount of presentation time of information that we have an opportunity to consume ahead of. So kind of do, that would be my preference. Then, then we're really down to that one question we have about the material that we read, rather than, you know, I think it's great to have our, to have people here, but it also provides us more constructive dialogue.
Yeah.
If we're consuming it ahead of time.
Well, I think the last thing is, uh, based upon what Liz was saying about heading up this communications, I don't think I have any conditional reservation. Um, you understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, yeah. It's, I mean, it's like one of those things is you want to see it done right. And you, and, and I think, you know, in, in all of us, the intent of our support of a study is with, it was with the starting belief that we want to do this thing right, with the right communication and with the right transparency.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, um, uh, there are, there are a lot of retired people in this community and when they saw this coming out again, it kind of shook, you know, what's going, it's, it's got their attention. And so being transparent and being open with, with how this is going forward is important. We don't need our communities all upset and then get to the end of this and have another major failure because of a lack of communication. I.
Absolutely.
Uh, I mean, I, I've invested everything I could to make sure it happened. I even wrote a letter to the commission, Bell Saka at the time. Remember when they got to the point where the state was going to make a decision? I even, his, my letter is in his file.
I think the beauty of a publicly, I think the beauty of a publicly funded study, if we choose to do it, is that we will, almost by definition, have data and facts to present to the public.
Well, they did. They did before. They had a lot of data.
So that, I mean, I almost think that by its definition, I mean, it's going to be transparent. We're going to share the data. We just want to get, this will be the first step in maybe getting this kind of updated data and maybe being able to step away from the old study.
Yeah.
Um, because I think it, I think it's valuable to the process. I just want to go back and clarify. So on, on our consensus record, you would be a yes.
Yeah.
So it's a unanimous that at least tomorrow you can represent to the boards that are discussing it and will be taking a vote, that the U forty-six board is, is behind and fully endorses the idea of pursuing a study.
Is there anyone who plans to attend tomorrow night for U forty-six?
No.
What time is the meeting again?
Six thirty at the police station.
I'm going to, I'll, I'll try. I'll try.
All right, if, if you can.
Yeah.
I can come at six, but I have another meeting at six thirty, so I can come for the first half an hour and it's only scheduled to be an hour, so maybe it's useful to be there for part of it.
I'm sorry, is it six or six thirty?
I think it's six thirty. Oh, it's si- it's six thirty. Yeah, I can come.
Okay. I'm going to try to be there.
I mean, it's fine. I can deliver your message.
I'm going to, I'll try to. I'll, unfortunately, I know at about four o'clock tomorrow, if I can make a six thirty meeting. That's not a, I, I can't commit right now, so.
Okay.
The things have been pretty chaotic.
Yeah. Are we good? Then we'll have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Then we are adjourned.